For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our upcoming meetings, our next month will be on Tuesday, October 14th. Folks, just a reminder, the November meeting will be on a Wednesday again. Veterans Day is on the Tuesday, so town hall will be closed. So Wednesday, November 12th, will be the second one. We do have minutes from August 12th, which by the way, I do want to thank Lisa for her time and attention to getting them done. You did a great job with them, particularly with your injury in your arm, so I do want to acknowledge that they really needed little changes on our part. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead. Good, second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we're good on that. So the first item on our agenda is we have a decision. This is an application that the board has already looked at. We already held a public hearing on. We're just going to issue our decision after, you know, our discussion about the issue. Then we have a bunch of public hearings on for this evening, and so if you're a neighbor who's gotten the letter, this will be your opportunity to tell us what you know and any concerns or positive information you might have about any of the applications that we're reviewing. Once we've completed, these are applications the board has already seen. We've already worked through, you know, the potential issues that we had on our part. So, you know, we felt they were ready for the neighbor comment on them. Then we're going to go to reviews. Some of these we have seen already, but we had some issues with, and so we've asked them to come back. But generally, most of the reviews are going to be new applications that we haven't seen before. There is no public comment on those reviews this evening. So with that said, let's start with item number one, which is a decision, Appeal 3678 Bozalay. William Bozalay, owner of Ivy Hall Estate, Bucano House, 21 Bucano Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting an interpretation of Section 194-64 Historic Structures, as well as a variance to allow an accessory apartment in an accessory building built after 1985 to facilitate the support and maintenance of this historic site, which was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1991 pursuant to Section 194-91D1. Does somebody want to offer the decision?
Yeah. Can I print it out? Okay, this is a reference to Appeal 3678 by William Bozalay, 21 Bucano Road, Hopewell Junction, seeking a, well, it's two parts, requesting an interpretation of Section 194-64 Historic Structures, as well as a variance to allow an accessory apartment in an accessory building built after 1985 to facilitate the support and maintenance of this historic site, which was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1991 pursuant to Section 194-91D1 of the Town of East Fischel Zone Ordinance. Section 194-64 Historic Structures provides in subdivisions A, B, and C as follows. Section 194-64 Historic Structures. A, applicability. This section shall apply to any structure within the Town of East Fischel that is listed on the National Register of Historic Places or that is included in the Historic Structures survey dated June 1984 for the Town of East Fischel, as amended from time to time by the Town Board. B, purpose. The purpose of this section is to assist in the preservation of the cultural heritage of the Town of East Fischel by allowing specialized uses to be permitted in structures of historic and architectural merit. C, uses permitted by special permit. The following uses may be permitted by special permit granted by the planning board, provided that the board finds that the application meets all the general conditions of Article IX and further meets all the applicable conditions as set forth in this section. One, specialized business uses of low-traffic volume normally associated with history, the arts, or cultural uses appropriate to the structure compatible with the neighborhood. Such uses may include: A, artists or artisan studios; B, art galleries; C, antique shops; D, rare book, coin, or stamp shops. Two, residential or professional uses, provided they are appropriate to the structure, compatible with the neighborhood, and are located on a state or county road that can accommodate increased traffic. These uses may include the following: A, sit-down restaurants not to exceed an average seating capacity of 50 unless the preservation of the structure necessitates a larger size; B, bed and breakfasts not to exceed 12 rooms; C, professional offices not to exceed six employees; D, multifamily residential use not to exceed four units. The applicant owns the Bucano House Bed and Breakfast on Bucano Road. He applied to the planning board for a special permit for the B&amp;B in 1990, which is allowed use as this is a historic structure, and also to the ZBA for variance, as the special permit requires the B&amp;B to be located on a state or county road, and this property is located on a town road. The road variance and special permit were both granted. The structures on the site plan in 1990 predated zoning. In 2003, Mr. Bozalay applied for and was issued a building permit for a 36-by-28 garage. He had a slab inspection, but that was all, and the permit expired. Evidently, he built the garage and added an accessory unit upstairs. He renewed his permit in 2008 and applied for a permit for the accessory unit in 2009. This permit was denied because the code states that accessory units are allowed in detached structures which were built prior to 1985. Since the garage has the accessory unit in it, it could not receive a certificate of occupancy. Section 194-64 of the Code Historic Structures states that there can be a B&amp;B not to exceed 12 rooms and multifamily residential use not to exceed four units. Section 194-64(c)(2) doesn't utilize an "and/or" form where, as the use is reciting. Mr. Bozalay has said he has five rooms in the main house dedicated to the B&amp;B and three accessory units, and the structures predate zoning. He would like to keep the accessory unit in the garage, which was built in 2003, and would like to know if the special permit for the historic structures pertains to the property which the structure is on, or specifically to certain structures. The board conducted a public hearing on June 10th, 2014, for the purpose of hearing comment on the interpretation of historic structures. Several members of the public participated and provided comments. Given the number of structures on the applicant's property and the number of uses in the structures, a meeting was held on June 30th, 2014, attended by the applicant's daughter, the ZBA chairperson, the town attorney, and the town zoning administrator. Every building and use on the site was inventoried and discussed in detail. Prominent in the discussion between the applicant and town officials was a letter dated February 20th, 1992, New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation by Commissioner Orrin Lehman to the applicant stating, "I am pleased to inform you that the above-referenced property has been listed on the National Register of Historic Places." As you may know, the National Register is the nation's official list of properties worthy of preservation. Listing on the National Register recognizes the importance of these properties to the history of our country and provides them with a measure of protection. By the 1992 letter from New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, this board learned that the entire Bucano property is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The full New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation application recites there are contributing and non-contributing buildings, but that the designation in having been listed on the National Register of Historic Places covers the applicant's entire property herein. This board had made aware that there are a number of structures on the applicant's property that do not have the necessary permits, and the site plan does not accurately reflect the present use of the property. As a result, the applicant has been advised of all the permits and approvals that must be applied for and obtained to bring this property into compliance, and must diligently pursue and obtain same. There is one use structure that requires review by the ZBA, meaning the apartment above the detached garage, because it is an accessory apartment in an accessory building. This is why the applicant, at the request of this board, amended his appeal to this board to include the variance for the residential use of this one building. In turn, the ZBA re-advertized and reopened the public hearing at the July 8th, 2014 meeting to consider this additional request for relief by the applicant. The applicant has been advised they must also submit a planning board application to amend the prior site plan and to obtain all the necessary permits from the town for all the uses on the property, including the expanded B&amp;B. Given all the foregoing, this board hereby interprets and finds as follows. One, the letter dated February 20th, 1992, from New York State Office of Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation to the applicant informed the applicant, quote, "that the above-referenced property has been listed on the National Register of Historic Places," end quote. We hereby interpret that the designation by New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation of the applicant, having been listed on the National Register of Historic Places, covers the applicant's entire property and thus are deemed historic structures under Town Zoning Ordinance Section 194-64. Two, in looking at Section 194-64(c)(2), two subsections, B, bed and breakfast not to exceed 12 rooms, and D, multifamily residential use not to exceed four units, can be interpreted as "and" and not need be construed as "or." As the board knows, any ambiguity in a zoning ordinance is to be construed in a property owner's favor, as zoning laws are in derogation of the property owner's common law rights. The applicant, three, the applicant is hereby granted a variance to allow an accessory apartment in an accessory building built after 1985 to facilitate the support and maintenance of this historic site, which was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1992, all pursuant to Section 194-91D1. Said Section 194-91D1 provides as follows. Additionally, an accessory unit may be located in an accessory building on the same lot, provided that such accessory building was constructed and completed prior to the effective date of this section, 1985. The relief granted above by this board hereby granted is subject to one condition. The applicant has been made aware that there are a number of structures on the applicant's property that do not have the necessary permits, and the site plan does not accurately reflect the present use of the property. Therefore, the applicant has been advised of all the permits and approvals that must be applied for and obtained to bring this property into compliance, and must diligently pursue and obtain same.
You need a glass of water?
Yeah, I'm still going. Just need to take a breath.
We don't have water.
This is a type-two action under SECA, as it consists of the interpretation of an existing code or rule and the granting of a variance. Therefore, no further compliance is required. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Do I have a second? Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So the votes are here. Thank you. I think Jim's off duty for the rest of the night. All right, so now we're up to public hearings. So item number two, Appeal 2216, excuse me, Jackson Soil Mining. Vern Jackson is requesting a two-year extension of his soil mining permit for his property located on Jackson Road pursuant to Section 194-75 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Jackson. I don't see that he's here.
No, he's here.
Oh, there he is. Okay, sorry. You've been operating a mine on this property, the soil mining operation, for many years. You did get an extension from DEC of your permit from New York State, D.C., through 2018. And so at this point, we did have a site inspection done by our town engineer, who went out and found that aside from the sign, I guess for the noticing of this meeting, that the operation was all in compliance with the town's requirements. All right, anything else you'd like to add otherwise?
No.
Okay, that's good. Any questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against the soil mining extension permit, two-year permit for the property located at Jackson Road? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And?
I'll just take this one. This is a continuation of Appeal 2216. Applicant is Vern Jackson, Jackson Soil Mining, located at 80 Jackson Road, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a two-year extension on his soil mining permit, which was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals on July 8th, 2008, whereas this action is a type-two action under SECA and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News, the official newspaper of the town, on August 27th, 2014, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on September 10th, 2014, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that Mr. Jackson has been in full compliance with the New York State DEC permit, which was issued August 22nd, 2008, for a duration of five years, and has been extended through August 15th, 2018 as well as his ZBA special permit, which was issued on July 8th, 2008, for a period of two years, and renewed retroactively on February 15th, 2012, for a duration of two years, with an additional one-year extension provided that, extension approved that expired on July 7th, 2014, but for which the applicant submitted his request for a further two-year extension. Now therefore, be resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves a two-year extension to the Jackson Soil Mining Special Permit to expire on July 7th, 2016, in order for the applicant to remove approximately 600,000 cubic yards of fill from his property located at 80 Jackson Road, Hopewell Junction, New York, pursuant to Section 194-75E, subsection two of the Town of East Fischel Code. Further, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Second. Second. Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Barbara.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. Mr. Jackson, you're all set. Okay, we'll see you in 2016.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, item number three, Appeal 3682 Oleskis. Sorry if I'm saying that wrong again. My apologies. Richard Oleskis, is that?
Getting closer every time.
Olischchuk. Oleschuk, thank you. 6 Somerset Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 20-foot front-line variance for a proposed in-ground pool pursuant to Section 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, as I was reading this, in my mind, I'm picturing it, the board has already had several reviews of this. You've gone to New York State, DEC. Last we met, you had done all the noticing. You were waiting for their actual approval to be able to go into the buffer. One of the concerns that, you have a property that is corner lot, so we have to deal with the fact that your once, what would normally be a side yard for any other home is really another front yard, so you have to deal with the 50-foot front-line setback. The issue that you have is that, given the road next to you on that site is significantly higher in terms of the topography, and so you actually would be afforded more privacy for the use of your pool if the closer the pool actually is to that slope, because it prevents the ability for people to be able to see into your yard. You do have a wetland buffer on your property, and so you did have to apply to New York State, DEC, to be able to encroach on that buffer, to be able to use some portion of that property, because we were asking you to shift it over a little bit. The concern that New York State, DEC identified, that you identified to us then at our last meeting, was the fact that DEC was asking that it be as close to the road as possible because it actually impacts more on the wetland buffer, the more it is kind of centered or the more it's moved over into the middle of your property as opposed to the side. And so that's one of the concerns that this board heard, because we certainly have had reservations about giving variances for pools. And so we've heard other concerns that you've raised, but again, the privacy issue, the wetland buffer, so which limited your ability to use your yard, the fact that you had septic fields in your backyard, really, and then, like I said, the fact that you have a corner yard, and DEC's constraints on your ability of where you could actually work with your yard as well, gave us pause to say, all right, let's go to a public hearing.
Correct.
Anything else you would like to offer since then? Have you heard from, are you done with DEC?
Yes, I am.
Good.
The day after, the board actually, when I appeared last, asked that I apply to DEC and see if I could move the project five more feet over to the west.
Okay.
Which I did the next morning, and they did actually let me amend my application mid-process without slowing the process down.
Okay, good.
Upon my approach?
Sure.
Since that time, they have approved the new plans, with the edge of the pool would now be 25 feet away from the headline.
We're going to go and give it a just a minute.
Yeah, we'll hand it down to the rest of the room.
Thank you. Also in that package is a copy of the permit I received from DEC and three letters from my immediate neighbors, everyone in my immediate area expressing their support for the project as planned.
Okay.
What's the, I'm sorry, the name of the road that runs alongside your property?
The one that?
Technically, it's a, we're calling them both front lots, but?
It's Somerset and?
It's Somerset and? I can't believe it's escaping me.
I think that's a hard question.
It's like asking some of their own home phone number, right?
Yes, exactly.
Is that just a regular?
It is.
Residential street? Is that more of a highway?
Oh, no, it's absolutely residential. It actually dead-ends in my development with three more houses down.
Okay, so on the other side of that street is houses?
On the other side of that street, actually, there's a wooded area, a large wooded area, and then becomes the Conic State Parkway.
Brookside?
That's what I was trying to get to. There's no houses then.
Absolutely no houses.
There can't be any built on that side.
It's Brookside is the?
Thank you very much.
Corner.
Yes, so nothing can be built there.
Yeah.
I think it's important consideration for us as well.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, because it's about the Conic Parkway.
Yep. This is him.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. Nothing can be built here, so even if somebody, they're not going to look over that.
Yeah, so there's never going to be a neighbor across the street that would ever be?
That would be looking at a pool, yeah.
Right.
You know, that's good. I just wanted to point that out.
Yep, no, that's a good point. Anything else?
I believe that's all I have.
Their permit says that it expires in 2016.
I had questions with that as well. I don't have to read?
If you put in a pool, you're not going to take it out. Do you go back and renew this?
Oh, believe me, I had a big concern about that.
Yeah.
That is just to have it constructed.
Okay, all right, so as long as you've constructed it by this date, you're good.
That was my first contact with DEC after I received the permit. I said, I hope I don't have to go through this every two years, and they assured me that's not the case.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. So this permit, the effective date is September 4th, so that kind of covers it. All right, any other comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
So the variance now is at the 25 feet?
Yes, it was moved to 25 feet.
Because that was your expectation that you were going to get the approval from DEC. Okay, so is there anyone here to speak for or against? Sorry.
The trees you show, you're going to add those, or those are already there?
The trees are there.
No, they're going to have to be, I had to get permission from DEC to plant in that buffer zone as well.
Ah.
What I'm going to try to do is eventually, depending on finances, see what size trees I could put in, but they, I had to get a permit to do that as well.
How?
And just in reference to that, in reading this thing, the prior question, that when it expires, this does reference that if he doesn't complete it within a time, it may require restoration. So there's indication in here that you just have to finish it within that time.
Oh, I plan on finishing within that time.
All right, any?
Yeah, for the record, we have three.
Well, I got to open, well, let me ask for a public comment first. Yeah, that's fine. All right, so no further questions from board members. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Mr. Oleskis?
Oh, gosh.
I'm so sorry.
It's getting better and better. Olischchuk.
6 Somerset, Oleschuk, I should like spell it phonetically.
You should write it out that way, yeah.
Except now I'm going to be done with it. 6 Somerset Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 25-foot front-line variance for a proposed in-ground pool. Seeing none, do I have a motion to?
Okay.
Oh, sorry, thank you. For the public, for the record, Aziz, go ahead. Do you want to enter in those three letters?
For the record, we have three letters from the neighbors. One is, one letter is from Nando Fennella and Maria Fennella, that is part of the, will become part of the record.
Who resided 22 Somerset Road.
Okay, 22 Somerset Road.
Oh, no. They resided 22? Yes, they reside.
Okay, as, another letter is from residents of 9 Somerset Road, Hopewell Junction, Phil Campbell and Don Campbell, and that'll be part of the record. And the third letter is from Steve D. Palmero and Carol, and Carol D. Palmero, at 14 Somerset Road, and that'll be also part of the records, and they all support the proposed project as planned.
Thank you. All right, so with that, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We reserve a decision on this?
Yeah, we don't have it ready yet.
Okay, so we'll amend that motion to close the public hearing.
And reserve a decision.
To close it and reserve a decision. We've got to write this one up very carefully, because it is a pool issue, okay? So.
It's a closing as amended, so.
Yes, yeah, and that, Mr. Quall, if you could just, I think it's important to note that the variance we're considering, there can be no neighbor across the street in the decision.
That's a key to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the points, all the points that we raised this evening.
And you'll be reading like it tonight, or reserve decision.
Somebody will.
Do I have to?
All right, so we're going to actually issue a decision next month, because we've got to be really clear on why we're saying yes or no, okay?
Very good.
We'll see you then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that would be first on the agenda.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah. So close and reserve. Do I, did I have a motion to amend that close to being close and reserve?
I took that you did make the motion, and we approved it.
Thank you. All right. Item number four, Appeal 3686 McIntyre, Susan McIntyre, 171 Meads Cross Road. Stormville is requesting a 46-foot front-line variance for an existing 8-foot by 10-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
How are you?
Good, all right, so we've seen your application a couple times. Now you've actually amended your application to remove the other discussion that we had, just because you heard the concerns of this board. I just want to state that, you know, for the record. And then, and so now we're down to the fact that with on your existing property is a shed, that's about four feet from your property, from the property line, and, but it's been there for many, many years, there's, haven't been any objections to it, and frankly, its condition probably is, would be questionable about whether, it served a purpose where it is, but it's, it might not hold up to being moved.
I have no idea how old it is, so.
And you didn't put it up?
No, we bought the house.
Right, you bought it, you bought the property with it, with that shed in place, so.
When did you buy the property?
1992.
Yeah, so the property's been there?
For a while, yeah.
A long time.
It's an old, yeah, non-conforming.
Right.
Two front yards.
Yes.
All the things you don't want, you know.
Thank you, we should actually state that for the record. That's one of the issues that you have as well, is that you also had a corner lot, we had so many corner lots last month.
Yeah, yeah.
So you also have two front yards, and that's one of the reasons why it's actually a 50-foot front-line variance, as opposed to, the fact that it's really in your side yard, it would, the variance would be much less substantial. Are there any other questions from board members?
No, I'm good.
All right, seeing none, is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Susan McIntyre, 171 Meads Cross Road, Stormville, requesting a 46-foot front-line variance for an existing 8-foot by 10-foot shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Did I open the public?
That's what I was just asking, did you open?
Sorry, guys, I got to back up. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? You're not keeping me honest, Aziz.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we are now opened in all of the discussion that we just had.
I move being incorporated into a public hearing.
Now, is there anyone who wants to speak for or against the request from Ms. McIntyre for her shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
That we've now opened.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I was doing well up until then. All right.
You still thought you were...
Decision, Appeal number 3686, Susan McIntyre, it's a 46-foot front-line variance for an existing eight-by-10 shed which is located in the front of the dwelling pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. The location is 171 Meads Cross Road in Stormville. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board to allow an existing eight-by-10-foot shed to remain in the front of the dwelling pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Whereas this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on August 27, 2014, whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on September 10, 2014. And whereas this is a corner lot and the existing eight-foot by 10-foot shed is on railroad ties and has been in the same location for 35 years. Whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, the variance requested is not substantial, and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Now therefore be it resolved, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request made by Susan McIntyre, 171 Meads Cross Road, Stormville, for a 46-foot front-line variance for an existing eight-foot by 10-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Okay, before I get a second, I'm actually going to amend the, where you say the, I'm going to suggest an amendment, where you say the variance request is not substantial, I'd actually like to head to the record, and was not created by any action by the applicant. Okay? So with that amendment, is there, is that okay with your motion? Yes. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Okay? Have a good night. All right, item number five, Appeal 3691, T&amp;J Properties, T&amp;J Properties, 2566 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, the Fleet Weather Building is requesting an expansion of a non-conforming building and a 77-foot front-line variance for a pre-existing non-conforming structure which is in a B1 zone in order that they may remove the existing decking to build an addition in the same size and footprint as the decking, remodel the inside of the building pursuant to Sections 193-123 and 194-121 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, thank you. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening.
All right, so we did see this last month.
Correct.
One of the, this is the Fleet Weather Building on Route 52 opposite Raspberry Ridge. It is an existing structure that has been there for many, many years. Its footprint is where it is, based on Route 52. There is an excel, a turning lane into Raspberry Ridge of that area.
Right, there's a de-acceleration lane.
Yeah, so that kind of brings the, is what brings the roadway a little bit closer to the building than we might, other what lies normally see. There's an existing decking off the back that rises for, you know, that you can see as you drive by, that rises for the full three feet. The applicant, it's a viable, strong business that's, you know, where the employees in there, based on what you told us last month, are pretty cramped, and they need some additional space. It is a business, obviously, in this town that we wish to continue to be here, so they are not looking to expand the footprint of real, where they have existing space. They'd just like to be able to take where the space of the deck is, all three stories of it, and enclose it as real commercial space.
Right, and then renovate the interior to loosen up some of the, let's see...
Flow of the space.
Space that's not available to us.
Right. Okay. Anything else you'd like to offer?
Pretty much it.
Okay. Any questions, comments from board members?
It has a basement and two floors or...
It is, it's a, it's not a full basement, it's kind of a, it's a short basement, but it is there, yes.
Okay, and then two floor, and then two stories above that?
Correct. It's, it's an old residence that was converted and added on over the years, and the deck was added on, actually Mike Donnelly, a former member of the planning board, built that for Fleet Weather. And that's back when they had the radar, you know, you remember they had the huge antennas out there? Well, that was one of the reasons why they had it, they don't need that anymore. So this is one of the reasons why they wanted to, let's see, recycle the space.
That's one of the reasons why that deck was always very visible because of all the equipment that used to be on it, so, yeah.
I guess maybe it's not really affecting the site plan, you're not adding this on to increase employees, all that kind of stuff.
No, no, if you, if you go in the house, it's, it's a bastardized colonial, but with the interior walls the way they are, it's, it's very compartmentalized, and the employees are, there's sometimes two or three in an area, and they have very large monitors they each have, so you walk in there and you could set, you know, there's papers and things that, you know, it's, it's very difficult to get done what they needed, and we went and looked at it, and, you know, one of the things they have is a kitchen, a bathroom, it's, you couldn't change your mind in it, so we decided to just take this space and reutilize it and then move the kitchen and some of the other spaces out to that new addition, which would be where the deck was. So it's one of the ideas we had, and this is why we're here now, so...
Are you adding any parking spaces? Because I see there's a blacktop and parking area.
It's actually existing, we're not, our intent is not to add any more pavement.
Okay.
And you have a wetland behind you, so you really can't...
It's right there.
You're not, you're not, there's no additional impact, there's no impact at all, you know, changed, site plan wise.
Nope.
Okay. Are you going to have access from the parking lot into that new space, is there going to be?
Yeah, if you've ever gone back there, there's like the interior stairway here. We're almost going to duplicate that so that you'll be able to enter that space from, from that same location, so it will create an interior stairwell that we can remove the existing interior stairwell, which is inside the core of the house, which eats up a lot of space, so...
Any other questions, Ron? No? Is anyone here to speak for or against T&amp;J Properties, 2566 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, the Fleet Weather Building requesting an expansion of a non-conforming building and a 77-foot front-line variance for a pre-existing non-conforming structure? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Want to go?
Sure.
This is Appeal number 3691, T&amp;J Properties, for an expansion of a non-conforming building and a 77-foot front-line variance for a pre-existing non-conforming building in a B1 zone in order that the owners may remove the existing decking to build an addition of the same size and footprint and remodel the inside of the building pursuant to Sections 194-123 and 194-121 of the zoning ordinance, located at 22566 Route 52, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Barbara Barosa, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for an expansion of a non-conforming building and a 77-foot front-line variance for a pre-existing non-conforming structure in order that they may remove the existing decking and build an addition of the same size and footprint to remodel the inside of the structure pursuant to, pursuant to Sections 194-123 and 194-121 of the zoning ordinance. Whereas this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on August 27, 2014, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals had a public hearing on September 10, 2014. And whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as this building has been existing and used by the applicant for many years. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as this is an undersized lot and backs up to wetlands. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request made by T&amp;J Properties, 2566 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, for an expansion of a non-conforming building and a 77-foot front-line variance for a pre-existing non-conforming structure which is in a B1 zone in order that they may remove the existing decking to build an addition of the same size and footprint as the decking to remodel the inside of the building pursuant to Sections 194-123 and 194-121 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Tara, second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
For the record, I have a thing to say.
Not yours? All right, item number six, Appeal 3692, San Marco, Maria San Marco, 2 Chase Court, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a 17-foot sideline variance for an existing 12-foot by 8-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we did review this last month. The shed was knocked up by you again.
No.
Was it put up by your father?
It was not put up by my father.
It was not?
It was there when he purchased the house.
Okay, and so you stated for us last time that that shed's been there for at least 20 years.
Yeah, probably more likely, more than that.
Okay, it's, it's, your, your property, the way it goes up the driveway, it's about 17 feet back from your driveway.
From the end of the driveway.
But it's eight foot in from your property line, but again, it's been there for many, many years, and similar to one of the things, the circumstances we just heard recently was the condition of it, because of its age, it would be very, very difficult for it to be moved, and there's not an interest at this point because it's functional to have it taken down. Is there anything else you want to offer for...
No, that's really it. I mean, we also have a corner lot, so there's two front yards.
What else?
Thank you for the record, this is another property with, with, with two, a corner lot with two front yards, so...
And you say it was there when your father bought it?
Yes.
When did he buy it?
1994.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's been there for over 20 years.
Yeah, I just wonder if we're getting far back enough that...
Oh, that it would be grandfathered in, yeah. I don't, I don't think that we thought it was that old, so... All right, so any other comments or questions from board members?
No.
I'm good.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal by Maria San Marco, 2 Chase Court, Wappingers Falls, requesting a 17-foot sideline variance for an existing 12-foot by 8-foot shed?
For the record, I'd like to add that there was...
There's a neighborhood.
There's a neighbor residing at Fort Chase Court, George Cola...
Cola Batista.
Batista. And he basically said that this shed has been there for over 20 years, and, and he's, he does not have any...
Does not interfere with his property, imposes no problem for his family, there's no adverse effect or impact on the neighborhood for the shed to remain where it stands, so...
It's part of the record, huh?
Yep, no, that's good. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll just take this one. This is Appeal 3692, Maria San Marco, at 2 Chase Court, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a 17-foot sideline variance for an existing 12-by-8-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a 17-foot sideline variance for an existing 12-foot by 8-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance, whereas this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on August 27, 2014, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeal held a public hearing on September 10, 2014, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the shed was built by the previous owner and has been in that location for many years, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the septic area is in the middle of the backyard, the variance requested is not substantial...
Can we add the language again, that it was not self-created?
Not self-created.
And it was, uh, um...
Where's the previous one?
Well, he put in there, at least, it was by previous owners.
Okay, we can just add it up there, by the previous owners, and, and it was not self-created, and has been on that location for many years, and it was not, and so not self-created. Again, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the septic area is in the middle of the backyard, the variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request made by Maria San Marco, 2 Chase Court, Wappingers Falls, for a 17-foot sideline variance for an existing 12-foot by 8-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're all set. Right, can you do me a favor, pass these to Pam, so she has the changes to the resolutions.
Thank you.
Okay, item number seven, Appeal three-six-nine-three Rojas, Henry L. Rojas, nine Cooper's Lane, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to a proposed six-hundred-seventy-six square foot garage to be located in front of the, frontline of the dwelling pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven C of the zoning ordinance. Just in time. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, Brian.
I was having a good time outside.
So, Mr. Rojas is, has submitted a new application, and he had previously submitted an application for a garage in the front of his house that this board reviewed and didn't agree with.
Correct.
And so now he's, it's much further back, it's much closer to the house, it's screened better from the road, so it's less intrusive on the neighborhood.
Correct.
I think the size of it is still the same thing, there's going to be no use on the second floor, so the materials are going to be consistent with his house, I'm sure, so...
Yep.
So, any comments or questions for board members?
Um, it's still, I was just wondering, is it still in the front of the rear, rear lane?
It's, it's still in the front yard, because it's a, it's a double...
Okay.
It's got double frontage.
Is, is it attached or detached?
It's detached.
Okay, because at one point in the minutes, it was one thing that we, it did actually at one point say it was attached, so we're going to have to take care of that, but, okay.
Again, it's such, again, it's one of those corner lots, because Palin Road and Cooper's Lane lay out, I mean, create the, it as having two front yards, right?
Yes.
So, it's one of those issues.
Right, and I think from, from the one front yard, which is Palin Road, I think we're about a hundred and fifty-two feet from the furthest rear corner of the, of the proposed detached garage to the road. Plus, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we have the fifty-foot non-disturbance easement along Palin, so plus or minus, it's got about seventy-five feet additional beyond the fifty of just vegetation that will not be removed. There'll be some vegetation removed for grading around the shed, but...
And one of the issues this house has is the, there's significant vegetation, and there's probably even a slope behind this house that makes it really impossible for them to be able to go behind the whole.
Right, the applicant has a fairly extensive backyard, where he's done some landscaping, some stone walls, and he has, it also has an in-ground pool in the backyard with a large patio, and directly behind, behind, behind the driveway, there's a large rock outcropping. If you've seen his driveway, he had to hammer out the entire driveway. So, just to preserve the house foundation and, and the work done to the backyard, specifically the pool and the concrete, it's just easier just to take the garage and move it over slightly to the side to avoid all that.
It's also much, it's quite a bit elevated over the...
Right, right, it'd be about six feet in elevation that would have to come down.
So...
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I think, you know, again, we tried before, we denied it, and this is a much better location.
Much better location, okay. So, is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Henry Rojas, nine...
Dr. Rojas.
Okay.
He's my neighbor.
Okay, let me, one second. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Henry Rojas, nine Cooper's Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance to allow a proposed six-hundred-seventy-six square foot garage to be located in the front of the frontline of his building? Yes, come on up.
Dr. Rojas is my neighbor, he lives directly across the street from me.
Okay.
And I have no problem with him putting up a detached garage.
Okay.
And we get along beautifully, I mean, I can't complain.
He's a good neighbor.
Yes, very good, even my neighbors next door and across the way, so I'm for him to have the garage built.
Okay.
It's no problem.
Okay, if you don't mind, can we ask you, there's a clipboard on that table, can we ask you to print your name on there, just so we have it for the record?
My son and I both signed.
Oh, okay.
So, it's okay.
You can enter it as part of the record.
Yeah, if you...
I was going to bring it to you today, but I got stuck, I was waiting for my son to come home.
Yeah, if you give him...
Uh, do you want to bring it here, so we can make it part of the entry?
We're going to enter it. It's written to the record.
Okay.
Yeah, but if you don't mind, if you could print your, print your name when you, to sign in over there.
Thank you.
So, we have a letter from, oh no, this is the, this is your notice of the...
That was a notice, don't you call me to just, when I sign, and say that I...
Oh, okay, at the, okay, at the bottom of the notices that you received from us...
Yes.
And so you must be Rochella?
It's our partner.
Perna, okay, and so you've written that you approve of Mr. Rojas's garage, and Edwin Velez?
That's my son.
Okay, um...
He lives at the same property as you do?
It's just a P.O. box, so I don't...
Does he live at the same property with you?
Yes.
Okay.
My son and I...
Okay.
All right.
...property next door to himself.
So, we'll make the, we've made it a part of the record. Thank you. Anyone else?
Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And?
All right, this is Appeal number three-six-nine-three, Henry Rojas, for a variance to allow a six-hundred-and-seventy-six square foot detached garage to be located in front of the frontline of the dwelling pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven C of the zoning ordinance, located at nine Cooper's Lane, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Barbara Barosa. Whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a variance to allow a six-hundred-and-seventy-six square foot detached garage to be located in the front of the frontline of the dwelling pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven C of the zoning ordinance. Whereas this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on August twenty-seventh, twenty fourteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on September tenth, twenty fourteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, the variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Henry L. Rojas, nine Cooper's Lane, Hopewell Junction, for a variance to allow a proposed six-hundred-and-seventy-six square foot garage to be located in front of the frontline of the dwelling pursuant to section one ninety-four one oh seven dash one oh seven C of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Do I have a second? Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries, you're set.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, item number eight, Appeal three-six-nine-four Torres Martinez, Jesse Torres Martinez, ten Kent Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a fifteen-foot rear line and ten-foot sideline variance for a proposed deck, a ten-foot rear line variance for a proposed thirty-foot above-ground pool, and a five-foot rear line variance for a proposed patio pursuant to sections one ninety-four dash ninety-four, one ninety-four dash ninety-five, and one ninety-four dash ninety-three of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
We spent a lot of fun time with you last, with last month trying to sort this one out.
Mm-hmm.
And, and again, after much discussion, you have a very, very tiny backyard, okay? You're, you're one of those lots that's just, it's just tiny, and your, your lot is taken up, most of your rear yard is taken up by your septic fields.
Correct.
And so what you came to this board asking for was a thirty-foot above-ground pool that you're going to set in the ground just a little bit, and, but you really were looking to be pretty close to the property, and I think you were asking originally for it to be within five feet.
Correct.
So that you could have some, some decks around, or just around in the corner of your lot to be able to have around the pool, and then some patios as well, a little bit on, on each of the sides.
Correct.
And as we worked through the application, we really worked with you to, to reduce the sizes of variance, we moved, shifted things over a little bit, reduced the size of the decking, recognizing you still needed room to be able to put a lounge chair, et cetera.
Sure.
You know, so we, and we appreciate the fact that you really did work with us to the best that you could, but you just have such a tiny yard.
Absolutely.
And I, I don't mean that in a negative way, it's just, just, just the nature of some of the neighborhoods in town. You don't have the opportunities that other properties in this town have, and so we do, this board does have to recognize this, that your acre, your, your lot, Pam was able to get the information for me, you have a lot that is point four-five-nine of an acre, so you don't even have half of an acre.
Not even.
Okay? And it, it was created before nineteen sixty-three, so that's, you know, it's one, before zoning went into effect, so that's one of the reasons that you do have a lot that really is just, is just tiny. You were very, you know, cooperative with us as we worked through the issues, working to the best that we could with the lot that you had. Any comments or questions from board members?
All moved.
So, is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Mr. Jesse Torres Martinez, ten Kent Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a fifteen-foot rear line and ten-foot sideline variance for a proposed deck, a ten-foot rear line variance for a proposed thirty-foot above-ground pool, and a five-foot rear line variance for a proposed patio? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? So moved, and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Appeal number three-six-nine-four, Jesse Torres Martinez, fifteen-foot rear line and a ten-foot sideline variance for a proposed deck, a ten-foot rear line variance for a proposed thirty-foot above-ground pool, and a five-foot rear line variance for a proposed patio pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-four, one ninety-four dash ninety-five, and one ninety-four dash ninety-three of the zoning ordinance, located at ten Kent Road in Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a fifteen-foot rear line and a ten-foot sideline variance for a proposed deck, a ten-foot rear line variance for a proposed thirty-foot above-ground pool, and a five-foot rear line variance for a proposed patio pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-four, one ninety-four dash ninety-five, and one ninety-four dash ninety-three of the zoning ordinance. Whereas the applicant is a type, whereas the action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required, whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on August twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on September tenth, two thousand and fourteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as this is an undersized lot, point four-five-nine acre in an R-one zone, and the home's septic fields limit the area available. The undersized lot was created through subdivision prior to nineteen sixty-three, when the town adopted zoning. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Jesse Torres Martinez at ten Kent Road, Hopewell Junction, for a fifteen-foot rear line and a ten-foot sideline variance for a proposed deck, a ten-foot rear line variance for a proposed thirty-foot above-ground pool, and a five-foot rear line variance for a proposed patio pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-four, one ninety-four dash ninety-five, and one ninety-four dash ninety-three of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, your motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too.
Enjoy.
Okay, this is our last public hearing of the evening, and then we'll go out, get on to the review. So, appeal, number, item number nine, Appeal three-six-nine-seven, Peacock, Gregory Peacock, twenty-seven Flower Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a special permit for an in-home professional office of a real estate broker pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we did see Mr. Peacock last month, he is looking, no employees, you're just looking to be able to hang that shingle for the IRS purposes within your home...
Yes, for the Department of State.
Department of State, sorry, well, I think it works for both of them, too.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
You have to have an address to get your license.
Yes, yep. It's a virtual brokerage, I've never had a client come over my house in five years at my old place and at, you know, this place for two years.
And no employees, and no expectation, expectation of employees.
No, I, I have two independent contractors underneath me.
Correct.
Correct, no employees, no.
Yep.
Nope.
Okay.
But the independent contractors are virtual, too, they don't work out of your...
Correct, no, they're at home, yeah.
We do, did actually get a letter from your neighbor, and you have the fortune or misfortune of the fact that I have a relative who lives right around the corner from you.
Okay.
And so both my relative and your neighbor have expressed concern about the sign that's in your front yard.
Okay.
To the extent that, and I, I don't, I haven't seen it, so I don't, you know, I can't say what it, but it, but it appears that it is encouraging, it looks like your home is for sale, and that when people then might call the number, you, you offer that you can show them something else, but your house is not actually for sale.
Right, no, it's not.
And so the question, it begs the question really, what's appropriate is a sign on your lawn.
Correct.
You, you do have a neighbor who has written to us, your neighbor at thirty Flower Road, he's out of state for the day, so he could not be here, he wants to send this letter. He does not support any type of special permit that allows signs or business advertising on curbsides in residential areas like Flower Road. He built his home in this neighborhood in nineteen eighty-three and feels its character should continue to remain as one-hundred percent residential only. By character, he means privacy, minimal outside traffic, Flower Road is a cul-de-sac, well-maintained homes and consistent, and consistent value. Well-earned reputation of our neighborhood has earned over thirty years, has earned over the thirty years, should be preserved for all homes. So he wants to oppose the neighbors, the vote, also opposing curbside signage related to the permit, so...
Okay.
I don't, you know, you, when we...
Right.
I don't know how important signage is if it comes into your home.
No, no, I, I went, I went to the town to ask the correct, and they couldn't find the correct measurements for the signage. I'd be happy to put out a smaller sign if that's the problem, that's not a problem at all.
The sign has to be approved by the town board, correct?
Town, building department. Signs are now building department.
Oh, I'm sorry, building department, I'm sorry.
We got rid of them.
It's right in the section for special, yeah, but it's two by two, two feet by two feet is the biggest it can be.
Okay, two feet by two feet?
I think so, two square feet.
So mine was...
But it's right in the section for...
Mine was twenty-four by thirty-six, so...
Yes, too big.
So, that would be too big.
I, that's not a problem, I'll change the sign immediately.
It's right in the section, unfortunately, I don't have my book with me, but it's right in the section dealing with this area...
Okay.
That, that you're allowed to put out one side and one sign with the dimensions on it, and they have to approve it, so...
Okay.
All right, but there is, related to professional...
One forty-nine...
Related to professional, accessory professional offices, external signs, okay, there is section, this is one ninety-four dash ninety, and this is B, external evidence. There shall be no external evidence of such use except an announcement or professional sign not over two square feet in, in area. While new construction and exterior alterations, you don't have to worry about this, will would result in an appropriate visual composition, which will be in harmony with the character of the residential district, taking into consideration the outside dimensions of the front facade and the appearance thereof. The visual relationships between the property in question and existing residential structures, the character of the residential district, architectural style, heights, size of the buildings, location, arrangement of buildings, all of that, you need, should be, should be taken into consideration. All right, so there is a limit, two square feet for your sign, and it's, you know, take into consideration, your neighbors are, are objecting to it.
Okay, absolutely.
And basically, that from our experience, the sign has to just reflect that there's a professional living, like a lawyer, or a doctor, or CPA, or an accountant, or whatever.
Right.
Some professional, and, and it's limited to that professional, it's not like, you know, giving an illusion that this is...
Right, well, that's why that, that sign is different from my other sign, says licensed real estate broker on it, on my other signs, I don't, I don't have that, so, and I just, it had to be legible from the street for the New York State law, so I just wanted to make sure it was legible, because I was thinking of New York State, I wasn't thinking of the neighbors, honestly.
Yeah, but there's, there's different size letters that you have, based on the speed of the road. Flower Road is, is, especially where you are in the road, you're, you're pretty far in, you know, we're probably at least halfway.
Yeah.
Whereas a virtual, you don't really need it.
You don't have to go very far, right, and you're not...
Right.
...having customers come and stop at your office, so...
Correct, correct.
And you're not on a main road.
Right, no, that was just in case New York State came, just to make sure I had a sign, because I want to go under the law of...
I understand what you're saying.
Right, I, I have no problem, I'll do, you know, I'll do a sign beside of a credit card, I'll do anything to, I, I just want to go by the rules.
Because sometimes, people want to go the other way, and they say, well, how do I figure out two square feet, so they just want to count the letters and not the, the placard part of it.
Right, I, yeah, I have no problem putting up...
Two square feet, so one by two, or is the maximum, or we want to break that a foot and a half by, a foot and a quarter, that will work, too, so, I don't know, you got to measure it.[1531.83]
There's a CPA sign on Coolgrass Road.
Yeah.
That, she incorporates it as part of her mailbox and it's very professionally done, okay? I would just use that as a potential example.
Okay, absolutely.
Because then, I can't imagine anybody would have any objection to that one. But it's very clear, you get the point, what she is, what her business is.
Right, okay.
You know, so, but it's not obtrusive, it's just part of her, part of her mailbox.
Right, right.
All right?
Okay.
Again, it is an issue that New York State has a certain requirement for signs for a professional, and you know, again, the New York State, if there is some evidence that you can bring to the board, then, okay, there's, which, they're different, then maybe we can visit that issue or the town can visit that issue.
Okay.
If, we are not conforming with the state of New York requirements, as an example. So, you know, again, you're trying to comply with the New York State and you have to balance.
Right.
And again, we have to comply with New York State also.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
Okay, so any other comments or questions from board members?
No.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Gregory Pecor, 27 Flower Road, Hubble Junction, requesting a special permit for an in-home professional office of a real estate broker? All right, I'm going to ask you to sit down because somebody would like to come to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Jill Platt and I have resided at 17 Flower Road since 1984. And you probably don't remember, but back then, we had a lot of date restrictions, you couldn't have a boat, you couldn't have a commercial vehicle, many other things. Matter of fact, the original owner of your home had to spend a lot of extra money to accommodate his boat because he couldn't park it in the yard. And yes, the sign is way too big. It's, to me, it's offensive. I also want to bring to your attention that I'm, I'm against the sign, I'm really against the home business, and the reason being that on this street, okay, there are at least two other brokers. There is Victory Oil, he lives there.
Is he operating the business there? I'm sorry, is...
He, he lives there.
Right.
He used to park his trucks there, but you know, he's had to move them.
Right, okay.
The, there is a man who owns a water business in Connecticut. Why couldn't he just start another, sort of commuting to Connecticut to his office? Why can't he just have it there? I feel this would seriously negatively affect my property values. And I have been there since 1984, so I've seen my property go up, I've seen it go down, and I'm now seeing it level off. So I am against it. I really, I didn't realize it was a virtual business because another thing I was going to say is, since 1984, when we all moved in there with babies, there's been more traffic on the road because babies grow up, they become teenagers and they have friends. But for those reasons, I really am against it because I do feel it will negatively impact the value of my property.
Understanding that he has no employees, no, no clients coming to the home.
Okay, but if he puts out a sign...
Beyond the sign, is there, is your objection the sign or is it really the, is it really the operation of a virtual business in and all?
I think it's having a sign and a business because then that, if you let one, then you're going to tell Victory Oil, now he can't put a little sign there, so he can have his little home office there, and you're going to tell, well, I suppose the other brokers want to put out a sign.
Well, it may not be...
See, then I think, I think it can becoming a snowball effect, and this is my concern. I want to preserve the value of my property and preserve the quietness of Flower Road is a nice, it's a cul-de-sac, but it's one of the longest cul-de-sacs.
It is, yes.
Okay, and, but it's a very, very quiet road. As soon as you turn up that road, there is a sense of quietness because the houses are set back, there's trees, you know, there is a sense of quietness to the road.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for your comments. If you don't mind, if we could ask you to sign in print, please, come on up.
I'm an associate broker with Houlihan Lawrence and I'm against the sign also. And when you say no employees, when you're, when you're working for a company, like he has two associates working for him, they do travel back and forth to, just more traffic on the road. So I'm against the sign of any sort. And also on the street, there is other people, not only what she mentioned, but there's a beautician and she's working and there's constant cars going up and down the road. And there's a couple of accountants and they could hang out their sign too. Now, every other house had a sign out, wouldn't we look commercial? And I thought about doing it myself, but I felt I shouldn't do that to my neighbors.
So you, you live on this street as well?
Yes, yep. He only moved in within the last year or so and then all of a sudden I see a sign back up and I thought for sure, it's for sale, but it's not. The sign is absolutely offensive.
Well, that sign wouldn't be permitted, it doesn't have approval for that sign.
Right, it does not. And I think nobody's going to be too, I don't think anybody's going to be too happy with any sign. Because there's quite a few people who operate their own businesses out of their homes here. That's it.
Thank you.
Again, you mentioned that you are yourself a real estate...
Yes.
...person. You don't have the same requirement from the state of New York that he does, and I was wondering why...
It seems to be, if you're on Route 52, for instance, it's commercial property and
there are sign limits, you know, you've got to have a certain size sign.
Right.
And now we're in residential places where we all think it's safe for our kids, okay? And everybody's got a sign, you know what I'm saying?
But I'm trying to figure out the difference, why you don't have a requirement and he has a requirement?
I don't think he does. One, you're an associate, right?
Associate broker, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm working for Houlihan Lawrence.
Yeah.
Do you work from your home?
Yeah, I really, I do somewhat, yes.
The requirement is...
But nobody can come to my house.
The brokerage itself has to have a set location.
Right.
They can have satellite offices anywhere, wherever they want to open one, but the main brokerage has to have an address that's fixed, so the state can find them. So he needs an address. I don't think you're required to put a sign out, you don't have to put a sign out, but you have to state to New York State, this is my business and this is where I am. So that's the real issue.
Right.
The signage, if the approval's granted, is, I would imagine that, like you say, some of these people are running businesses out of their home and they're not getting approvals.
Right.
The right to have a accessory professional office applies to what we consider to be a profession.
Right.
As opposed to just a business. So to the extent somebody's doing hairdressing part-time out of their home, that's not one before, I'm not sure that would qualify under this statute.
Right.
So you have two different things you're talking about. One is a virtual office, whether he wants to put a sign out or not. I guess it sort of begs the issue, you know, as an attorney, if I put on my mailbox, James Miron, put attorney at law underneath my name, can I be stopped from doing that? I'm not running an office out of my home, but can I put my name out there with the fact that I'm an attorney? I don't know that the town can really stop me from that, but they can't stop me from not running an office out of my house unless I get the necessary approvals.
Right.
So if I'm trying to drum up business, they can tell me what size sign I want.
Right.
But those are all considerations, I think we're going to have to think about them and come up with a decision based on what we're hearing from everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Can we ask you to sign in, please?
Sure.
Please print your name.
Hello.
Hold on, we have, we have two of you.
Sorry, I didn't know that.
You, you don't have eyes behind your head?
No.
Hi, my name is Dave Geralamo, I'm the applicant's next door neighbor. I'm an original resident on that street since June 1984. I've seen this street develop, we were there with our children to see that. Proud to say that I live on that street and I'm sure Mr. Pecor is happy to live there too. That being said, we have issues, I think, with the potential going forward of people operating businesses out of their home. I'm, I'm a professional myself, I run a Honda dealership. I know what it is to try and do business, but we have a residential neighborhood and that's what it should remain. It shouldn't be converted into a quasi-commercial operation. And again, if Mr. Pecor wants to have a virtual real estate office in his house, I don't personally object to that. I do object to the signage, and I think the signage is a detriment to the community, our immediate community. I think it's a, an inappropriate display based on the construction of it, the placement of it, and it's not proper for our residential neighborhood and the way that neighborhood has been throughout these decades. I have an advanced sports memorabilia collection. If I decided I wanted to start selling that and I wanted to put a nice post sign outside my driveway by my mailbox, so that people would come into my house and look at my memorabilia, that'd be great for me, but I don't think it'd be great for my neighbors and I don't think it'd be appropriate for our neighborhood. So that being said, I wish him the best with his real estate venture. I know that's not his primary occupation, but the signage is a, is a big issue, and it's a big issue with me and it's a big issue with a lot of people that I've talked to on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please sign in? Thank you.
How are we up?
You're up.
Hi, my name is Robert Rose, I live on 32 Flower Road, just a couple of houses up. I just wanted to show you...
Oh, you have a picture of the sign?
This is what the sign looks like, and it looks like any real estate sign that you would see on a house that's up for sale.
I think we all on the board agree that the sign he has there should not be there.
But suffice to say, I think that the neighbors that have spoken thus far, I'm pretty much going to mirror their comments. I think Flower Road is a great road to live on and I'd like to see it remain so. I'd like to see it remain as residential only. And I really think that a sign of any kind, even a small sign hanging from a mailbox, takes away from the residential feel of the neighborhood. There's plenty of places to rent commercial offices, you don't have to even be in residence in the office if you need an address. There's ways to do this that doesn't impact this neighborhood and I hope that you'll let our neighborhood remain residential. That's all I can say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
I also have a picture of the sign. Ellen and Steve Saxton, we live in number 22.
Okay. If, if that's an extra, we'd love to put it in the file.
So we really, I think, don't have an issue with Mr. Pecor's application to have this business, but we'll echo again the sentiment that we do have a problem with this signage. It did appear to us as well that the house was for sale, and then when we learned of this application, we thought that would be very distressing to have that sign there permanently, for as long as he has his business there. So, I mean, I don't think we would object to a small sign very close to his house, but to have a, a large sign out on the street permanently would deter from the character of the neighborhood. In 1984, there was a declaration of restrictions recorded for this neighborhood, and number one is that the premises hereby conveyed shall be used for residential purposes, and we feel that. That is the character of the neighborhood.
Was there anything in the restrictive covenants about signs?
It doesn't specifically...
Lots of times there's a barrier about signs.
It doesn't specifically address signs, but when you put a commercial sign on the street, you're showing a commercial purpose.
But oftentimes the restrictive covenant will say, there can be no signs other than, you know, for sale signs in the residential...
Yes, I'm, I'm aware of that. These do not, these address other things, but not, they don't address signs specifically.
I'm surprised.
You should also be aware, there's two different things you're talking about. One is the law, as the zoning board has to deal with it, now you're talking about deed restrictions, which is something that gets enforced completely different from what we do.
Understood, but it, it goes to the character of the neighborhood and the, the feeling of the people who purchase homes in that neighborhood and read these restrictions have an expectation that the residential character will, will remain.
And I, and one reason I say that is, I don't know, I haven't read them, I'm not familiar with them, but even if, for example, we were to say it was okay, if something that's being done there is in violation of the restrictions, you can enforce those restrictions as restrictions regardless of what we do. So that's really, you know, a message to the applicant that, you know, he needs to look at his deed restrictions and make sure he's in compliance with those as well.
Yes.
Again, we don't have a concern with running a business out of his home or whatever, virtual business, whatever it be. There already are several houses for sale on the street. This makes it look like there's one more house for sale on the street, which I think has a negative connotation to people looking for homes on the street.
We're, we just really have a problem with the, the sign.
With the signage, nothing.
That's fine, we appreciate that.
People can make a living.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, please sign in, sure. Anybody else? All right, I think what we should do is close and reserve...
Well, before we go, I just wanted to point out to the folks who had come and presented their arguments for or against the applicant. The town of East Fishkill has a law which clearly spells out under section 194-90 accessory professional offices, and it lists, it says that, that the zoning board may, may grant a special permit for professional offices of a physician, attorney-at-law, dentist, engineer, architect, teacher, artist, musician, and other members of a recognized professional or trade are permitted in residential districts when conducted by the residents only, provided that the board finds that the application meets all the general conditions, et cetera. And then it goes on to talking about employees, external evidence, and retail sales and things like that. So there is something on the, on the books and I think we'll have to take that into consideration, especially what we have heard from the local residents. And so I would be proposing that we close and reserve or...
Thank you, I appreciate that, I hold your motion for one second. Are you worried that you have a deed restriction filed on your, is it filed on your property as well? I know there were a couple of different builders on Flower Road, so...
No, I wasn't.
So when you closed on your property, your title report didn't show any restrictive covenants on there?
Not that, no, I...
Probably did. Probably, because I presume that...
Not that, I was aware of. I mean, I, just so you know, I would have never, I mean, if, I understand my neighbor's perspective with sign, I would have never put the sign up. I wish they just came to me and told me, I would have took it right down. I don't want to upset anybody.
So I have a feeling that sign's going to be down before...
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to throw it...
In the application?
Well, if you do have a restrictive covenant on your property, do you want us to proceed with your application? Do you want us to issue a decision or do you want to withdraw it?
I want to take a look at...
Okay.
Your title.
All right, so...
He can go forward and he can always change his mind not to do it, I guess.
Yeah, that's true. All right, so what we're, what we'll, we'll take Aziz's motion to close, reserve our decision so that we would issue a decision at next month's meeting.
Okay.
Or do you want to continue the public hearing just so that he turns back with any additional arguments?
Yeah, he has different thoughts adjourned, so he might bring his different thoughts, his thoughts.
Okay, do you want to adjourn?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion to...
Adjourn?
Adjourn for October's hearing, the October meeting.
So we'll have you come back again and just...
Yeah, when did you, again, when did you buy that property?
Two, over two years ago in August.
You might be able to speak to your attorney, maybe she has the file, can, can look at...
Yeah, I will, yeah.
Dial your company and see if they came up with it.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
We'll see you next month.
All right, thank you.
Do I have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you everyone for your comments on that. We, we've now adjourned that, so we will reopen it for public comment next month if there's anything additional, but in the meantime, we'll also see what Mrs. Pecor wants to do with the application. So that's it for, for public hearings this evening, so the rest of our evening is, is going to be on reviews. So item number 10 is Appeal 3695, Mid Hudson Development Corp. Mid Hudson Development Corp. is requesting a variance to build on an undersized lot, .93 of an acre in an R1 zone located at 6 Old Fishkill Hook Road, Hubble Junction pursuant to section 194-130 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, Mr. Stenger.
Good evening, Chairman Drummond. I'm, I'm here, this is a relatively simple application, but it comes with a historic context, and I'm here to lay before the board that context and, in very, very spare terms, lay out the legal consequences as I see them of that context and perhaps to answer any questions you may have with respect to my view of what the law would require of us in these circumstances.
This piece of land was created in 1963 when 1984 was being built. I can, I can do that, Mr. Stenger.
Thank you.
And that's back in 1984. It was interesting to hear people say they've been here since 1984, I remember that being built.
What year was it, Mr. Stenger?
1963.
Should be true.
Not this particular piece of land, but I just remember 84 being built when I was a kid. I don't know what happened, all I can do is read what's in these files and, and although we can, we can get Mike Topkovich back maybe from, from Las Vegas, if we can talk to him, he might know. But apparently during the course of this construction, the Sportsman's Club owned 266 acres, approximately 66 acres was taken by the state for 84. There was a compensation package for the Sportsman Association, they got paid for that taking. And during the course of that taking and the construction, this is what I surmise from reading, because I really don't know other than what I've seen in the records in these files, but old Fishkill Hook Road got relocated. And I think, I suspect that this probably ran across and with 84 coming here, it turned into a cul-de-sac at the end. And when they designed this, they, they left this remainder lot, which is .07 of an acre shy of one acre. Well, and that really depends on which application you read, because one of them indicates that it's .55 of an acre short, I'm sorry, .055 of an acre short, not .07. So, 1963, lot of land taken, lot of irregularly shaped lots created, and we have a, a Citizens Board, a ZBA, looking at these circumstances. I grew up here, I remember the town hall when this was happening, was down on 52 and 376 and was heated by a coal stove. And I can imagine one of those nights in 1963 was when, when these issues first showed up. So now it's 1986 and an applicant comes before the board and says, we'd like to have a variance. We'd like to have an area variance, it's not a used area, an area variance. And the board, Mr. Topkovich was on that board, Mr. Pereskeva was on that board, Mr. Jakuba, all, all professionals and, and people I've known most of my life, either professional or personal setting, were on that board, but I don't know what anyone was thinking or what conversations were had, because all you have is the minutes. And the minutes say, in 1986, there was a great deal of deference, at least what I read in the minutes, to a, a policy that the ZBA had apparently adopted. It doesn't say formally, because you can't, because only the town or the state can make the laws, but there was an informal policy that if you were an irregularly shaped lot that didn't conform with zoning, and the board would want to look at how it was created and look to see whether or not you were compensated for that as a condition of granting an area variance. And this became, what I read, as the compensation policy. Some board members said in their consideration that in granting an area variance to a person who'd already been compensated for taking, you would be allowing them to get paid twice. who'd already been compensated for a taking, you would be allowing them to get paid twice. And I don't criticize any of that, I wasn't in the room, I wasn't the lawyer sitting there, I certainly wasn't the lawyer for the applicant. Because had I been, I would have said, "That's dead wrong," because the law doesn't provide that. Now, 1986, prior, and I will say that the board in '86 did not set this policy. The board in '86 said, "Look, historically, this is what the ZBA has done, and we have to follow precedent, because it's not fair to change the rules for the next person who came up. If the people who came up first were stuck with this policy, then we're going to carry it forward." And I think we can all agree that sometimes if a prior board's mistaken, legally, you have the ability to address that. You may not want to, you don't have to, it's a discretion, which not bound by a mistake that's previously made. None of us are, the law is not. The law is clearly not bound by a mistake previously made. Precedent gets examined, you look at the basis for it. If it's not applicable, when the decision was made, you know, there's no need to follow it. When it's not applicable, with the facts that say exist today, there's no need to follow it. But in '86, the board said, "Look, we're going to deny this, because you, Sportsman Association, got paid." And the record's not clear how much they got paid. In 1998, there's another application, and in that application, someone said the Sportsman Association got paid $40,000 for this taking. I have no idea if that's true or not. It's not a fact we can rely on. It's just history in these files. So, the board in '86 says, "No, we're going to turn this down." And we're going to turn this down for one reason only, it's because it's a consequence of this policy established by our board. And the language is very, very clear, I mean, very specific. I would just, I would like to read it, because I want... Yeah, okay, this is the language from 1986, and it's motion by Mike Tompkins, and second by John Jakuba. And it denies this application, which is virtually identical to the one that's before you this evening. Due, quote, "Due to the fact that the precedent set by this board has been to grant these appeals only when there are special circumstances and hardships shown by the applicant. At this meeting, there was not any, has not been any special documentation shown from the historical documentation, the creation of this undersized lot to award the variance." Okay. And they go on, if you look at the record, and I've provided you all, I think, with a copy of these minutes, you'll see the references to the compensation issue, and the persons involved. Now, back in 1986, since you've been in office, your conduct and how you analyze and evaluate an area variance has been a matter of statute. Town law, section 267b3 lays out the five-prong test. I've listened to your board all evening, apply it, so I know you're all very familiar with it, but that only came into existence 1993 or '94.
It was mid-'90s, yeah.
Sorry?
It was the mid-'90s.
Yeah, 93, 94.
The new enabling statute.
Prior to that, the standards of, the legal standards for the grant or the denial of an area variance was really the product of case law, of judges trying to elicit the consistent principle so that boards and applicants could be guided in whether an area variance should, what be an application, what be made, or whether it should be granted. And I don't presume to speak for Mr. Clorl, but I will tell you in my experience before the adoption of that statute, whether or not somebody was compensated for any portion of a taking, simply not a relevant consideration, as it is not now relevant under the statute that was made, that you work under today. Statute 93, the 267b3 statute, was adopted in an effort to eliminate the confusion of having different judges in different parts of the state apply kind of an elusive standard, so that you could have something that would meet standard in Dutchess County, but perhaps not in Orange County. And the statute was intended to create a uniform standard by which all applicants might have their applications judged. Prior to the, and that statute was adopted to, or I should say, the standards that adopted in that statute were adopted out of the case law history that had developed prior to its adoption. In other words, the legislators didn't just sit down there and say, "Well, what should we do here?" They looked at the history of the case law that preceded it, and took from that history the five-prong test that you now use every time you have this application for you. And that does not include any consideration of compensation. And frankly, the common law in 1986 didn't include it either. And maybe if the applicant that day had a lawyer standing next to him, who was working collaboratively and cooperatively with the town's lawyer, we may not be having this conversation now. That happened in '86. Now, in 1993, the five-prong test became the law of the land. Then we go to 1996. Now, this piece of land is owned by the estate of Richard Barge. And I can't tell you what Dick was thinking when he came before your board. I wasn't there, we didn't have a seance before tonight, but I read the minutes, and Richard shouldn't have had a lawyer, because Richard bought this property from the Sportsman Association, and within a month, he came, it appears, again, reading the minutes, that he came either to the board or someplace in town hall and said, "I'm buying this piece of land, I want to build a house on it." It's not clear, I can't make clear, it might have been, it certainly wasn't in the context of an application. It seemed like some informal communication. But he makes his application for the variance. And the board says, "Well, wait a minute." One board member says, "You were here, you knew about this difficulty before you purchased," and that sounds like you could make the argument that it's self-inflicted. Of course, we all know in the five-prong test, self-inflicted isn't fatal by itself.
Self-created.
Self-created, I'm sorry. But one board member made that point, but the other board members very clearly said, "Look, we can't grant this to you. It's our policy. It's our, it's what our ZBA historically has done. The prior owner was compensated, we can't grant this variance." And that's in the 1998 application. And, I mean, I see in there, John Maselli was on that board, so was Catherine Lazar. And in their decision, they very bluntly state, "A similar application was denied on December 9, 1986, as a consequence of the compensation received by East Hook Sportsman's Association for the parcel when the state took a portion of this parcel and other lands for the purpose of constructing interstate. No other evidence has been brought forth to indicate a basis for the reversal of this decision by this board." So, very clearly, in 1998, your predecessor board denied this application based on this compensation policy. But what the predecessor board did not do was did not apply five-prong test, did not apply the statutory requirement for the evaluation of the application. At least, I can't tell from the record that it did that. It may have, they may have done it, but it doesn't show up in this record. And I don't think that's really a big surprise, because in my experience, when there are very large formal changes to informal practice, it takes several years for the informality to give way to the formality. And I think now, you know, over the past 20 years of this statute being in existence, I don't know, but I'm sure you have in your packages, a checklist, here are the questions, what are the answers? Because I just hear you do it, I hear it everywhere I go. That didn't happen in 1998. Nobody said, "Let's look at that statute. Where in that statute is there any legal basis for the assertion of a policy that says if you were previously compensated, you don't get the area variance? Where is the five-prong analysis? It's not there." So, when, and I wasn't, I represented Richard in some projects and some enterprises, but not in this one. I don't know why he didn't come back with that. I don't know why some lawyer didn't say, because he knew a lot more of him than me, "Let's go up to Dutchess County and do an Article 78," because they didn't do the five-prong test, but he didn't do it. So, when this file came to me through Mid Hudson Development, you know, I looked at, I had a vague recollection of some of this stuff, I looked at the file, and my first thought was, "Okay, we've been here twice already. First thing is the board's going to look at and say, "Well, this is a problem, this is how we've acted in the past, and we have to respect the precedent we sit." So I would think that, I don't mean to speak for the board, but it would be my reaction. But my purpose here tonight is to show you that there is a basis for considering this application fresh, not to be bound by the past, but to now analyze this application as it stands here in the present, under the rule of law which now applies to it. And I think it's pretty clear in the law of states, case law, that a board has the discretion to look at mistakes made by prior boards and not follow them. You're not bound by something that was either mistaken, or bound by something that is not relevant in the context of today's rule of law. The adoption of 267b3 is a new fact. It clearly was not a fact considered in 1998. And if they didn't consider it in 1998, that was a mistake. And so all I'm asking is this, I know, I believe, I don't want to say I know, but I believe, that this board's, the predicate question as to whether or not we can get beyond the compensation policy to the merits of the application has to be addressed. I don't propose to ask that this board decide that issue tonight. I would ask if you have any questions of me that you asked. But I would ask that if you have questions with respect to the points of law that I've raised with you this evening, and in my letter to you, that you raise it with counsel. Because we do need a, I do think we need that answer. I think you probably, I don't even know if you have to give that answer to me in a context of a public hearing, because if you believe you're bound, then vote it, and then we'll go see where that takes us. But I don't think you are. And I think you have an opportunity to apply the laws that presently exist, the facts that are being presented this evening. And you can analyze the five-point test, and you can make this application, go up or down based on the strength of your analysis and the facts presented. And that's, thank you, thank you for listening to that history, but without telling you that history, I don't know that I could do any of this in this room service.
Okay, are you prepared to go through the merits of the application this evening?
Oh, sure, sure.
Okay, that's what we're waiting to hear, so. Brian, is that you?
Yeah.
Because honestly, I can't see this, all right? So, and even what you've got there, it's not much...
You mean physically, can't see it?
Yeah, well, with all the, I want to see that this is a buildable lot.
Yeah, that was my question.
I got mine, I thought, you know...
While you're talking there, Mr. Stanger, I'm thinking, is there something else about this lot that keeps it from being buildable?
That's...
And that's why the idea of total compensation came into place.
That's what we got to see. Because from what I can see, this is, as you've heard, we've heard many lots here with multiple front lines, multiple front yards, and from what I'm seeing, you're looking to create...
You got three front yards.
A lot with three front yards. So I want to see what the buildable area is, so that this board is not going to be faced with multiple variances every time the homeowner, potential homeowner, wants to, wants to do something. So go ahead, Brian, please take us through the actual merits of the application.
I wonder why you're hanging out.
On the R1 zone, 50-foot front, 50-foot rear, 25-foot side. From, from here, from?
Barbara, can you, do you want to come on over, so you can see a little better? Actually, go, Aziz is in the middle, go.
So basically, you have four front yards.
I can see, you see it okay, bud?
Fishkill Road, '84, Old Fishkill. So you got 50-foot here, we have 50-foot here. Technically, we should have 50-foot here, but within the zoning code, I believe, there's 100-foot side back from interstate.
From the state road, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned about.
So on the '84 side, we're 100 feet. So we have 50 along Fishkill Hook, 50 over Fishkill, 100 across '84. So that's what this envelope is here, this triangle in the center, backing into where we would do a potential house placement. We would face the house toward Old Fishkill Hook Road. I believe this was the old Gilman subdivision over here, there's one house existing now, recently built in the last five years, it's a vacant lot next door to it. So we face the house here, colonial-style house, probably about 2,300 square foot.
So your footprint there is about 1150? What's your...
Probably about 1150 plus or minus, we got a deck in the back we're showing here. I don't know if you can see it, we have a driveway coming in from the existing cul-de-sac in...
Five years later, we get the pull application.
We're going to get a variance application, you just know it, you know?
You can put a sandal right on there.
Well, it looks like you can do something with it, yeah.
I mean, we can fix and anticipate it. Well location has been shown, septic location has been shown. Back when Mr. Barge originally came back, before the board, he actually issued the board help process simultaneously while he was doing with his ZBA at that time. So there is an active approval from the health department as far as well, and septic, a moving of a four-bedroom house that can be built on this part of the... So as far as additional variance for the structural portion of potential house here...
From the context of being surrounded by four roads, the well, are you going to have a road salt issue in the well? I mean, the quality of the water is...
It drops from Fishkill Hook Road.
Yeah, it's quite below, is it even below '84?
It drops down.
Yeah, it is below '84.
It drops down.
Which means the salts from the road is...
Well, that leads up goes over, but I wonder how low it is.
The 4DCO is issued, there is a full part five that is known, if there is a sodium in it, or filters you can put on my ass, extra salt issue. But yeah, there are mechanisms if that is encountered. I mean, it's not similar to like Princess Drive, where you actually have the salt depot uncovered for 25 years. Well, we did some, we did some subdivision across the street, I want to say back into the mid-'90s, and your well depths in that area were 350 feet, 350, 250 feet down there.
Okay, that helps.
As far as another, they're on the '84 side. There's no issues with increased...
So the request here is kind of creating an island, you know, for this lot. So there's a neighbor across the street and a vacant lot. What's on the other side of Fishkill Hook Road?
Working out for that, we'll work our way around.
Yeah.
Vacant lot.
Vacant lot, neighbor.
Neighbor lot just came in five years ago. There's an active application Mr. Bytkowski has, there's a new subdivision proposed in here, I believe there's eight or nine lots, but it may be in the final stages of planning.
Okay.
So there is a residential neighborhood that will be accessing Old Fishkill Hook here. As far as development on this side of the road, residential, one-acre zone, existing homes.
How big is the lot that's just right across from?
One acre, one acre amuse. The post-subdivision has your closer toward Fishkill Hook Road, I believe I saw on Bill's map, there are acre, acre and a half, as you get further into the piece, because it's a long narrow piece, there are larger acre lots, probably six, seven acres.
So this, in that neighborhood, this would be the smallest lot, basically, less than an acre lot?
Well, you're in the R1 zone, most of the homes around here are...
Is there, so the back...
Do you get into wetland problems, is that the issue as you go out?
Across the street in the rear of the parcels, there is a larger DUC wetland.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we, in proximity to our piece, you're probably talking 700 feet.
Yes, I'm just saying, that's maybe why the lots get to be six, seven acres as you go on that proposed public...
Right, right, right. You work into the lot count formula, how that planning board has, or limited to X amount lots, based upon blarenow issues. And I think that's what it came out, that's what should happen.
It's not the R1 zoning that they're complying with, yeah.
Brian, read me some of your topo numbers. Where are you at Fishkill Hook Road versus where are you where the house elevation is?
You're 270, let's say on the backside of '84.
Okay.
Okay. Toward the front of the parcel will re-intercept Fishkill, Hook and Old Fishkill Hook, you're 254, so it drops down.
So it goes down, okay.
Everything kind of drains this way naturally, the cul-de-sac underneath the road.
Because my concern is, you're proposing the house that's going to face on Old Fishkill Hook Road, so what is it going to look like from Fishkill Hook Road? I'm looking at somebody's backyard. Is that what I really want, a long route, along Fishkill Hook Road?
Yeah, for the record, I did do a site visit, and it drops down at least 10, 15 feet. So basically, the second, the roof might be visible from Fishkill Hook Road, but it does drop down quite a bit.
Right, and also looked into, this is a heavily vegetated lot.
Okay.
We have an expanded wide right away here at Long Fishkill Hook. If you see how wide this is here, it's not standard 25-foot from center line. So in this area here at Lee, we're about 50 feet, plus if you work into the 50-foot front yard, you got about 100 feet from the edge of pavement to possibly the back deck. And if there's maybe any clearing back in here, it's just to be strictly for some surface drainage pickup, this right away that is currently vegetated would remain. So you have at least 50-foot vegetation here, even if you went to the property line of clearing, which we're coming close to, just to take care of the surface runoff.
Right.
And establish a backyard, but you're going to have that natural, that natural...
Yeah, didn't you approach the town board about acquiring... Yeah, didn't you approach the town board about acquiring part of that right-of-way?
We did.
And what happened there, because...
It's not possible to do that because it would have been part of a dedicated...
Roadway, or...
Yeah, part of the dedicated easement, town can't. I mean, I hope that's the easiest solution, but I, you know, do it that way.
Right, make your lot the right size.
And I have an obligation, I think, under the code to do that anyway, because I have to demonstrate to you that I can't do this any other way but by variance. So I, John can confirm, you know, there was, there was communication between our offices and with the town board, and ultimately, what seemed like an easy fix was not, because the area that we would need would have had to come out of right-of-way, the town can't sell apartments right-of-way. It was not, in other words, it was not an excess hole in the down-end available.
So was there a formal decision that should become part of this record, that relates, that shows that you made the effort to do that, or...
I think you can discuss that with counsel. I mean, there's certainly correspondence, I don't think there was...
When was this, when did this occur?
I think it was pretty recently.
Well, six months ago.
Yeah.
With Mr. Wood then, apparently?
Yeah, and I don't think it got to, I don't know, I don't think it got to the level of town board. I never presented it to the town board. I think what happened is the proposal was looked at by Mr. Wood and the town's engineer, and someone said, you know, what they're proposing is to take part of the right-of-way, that's not available for this purpose, we can't do that. So that's where that happened.
You did raise another issue in your presentation related to what is this actual size of the lot? It is the applicant's responsibility to tell us what is the size of the lot. So is this, is this a result, I mean, I would assume Mr. Barger would have surveyed the property, but...
Working off Mr. Barger's survey, we're at zero point nine-three acres.
Okay, so can we all recognize that that's the official...
Yeah, no, no, that's what I believed to be, and we were, we're working going forward on that, but I wanted to point out that you had a record in front of you that had some anomalies to it, and that was one of them.
That's mine, but, so the applicant has the responsibility.
It's right there.
You're acknowledging tonight as part of your application that it's point nine-three.
That's correct.
And again, according to the town record, it is point, zero point nine-three acres, so it's not any other number.
That's what we think. In the record, there was an earlier statement that, that was Barger.
Yeah, and I think we saw a Dutchess County partial access that showed it was almost two acres, so, yeah.
Go with two acres.
No, I know, I didn't doubt you would take that run.
Now, another thing I was looking, because I was at this location, your cul-de-sac, the way it is positioned, it takes a lot of space from the applicant's lot, I mean, or whatever, however they made it, but it does not, it's not kind of shaped for the lot across the street, I mean, it's not kind of taking, and I was trying to figure out why it's that.
Is it a standard, does it have this, the ability to turn around the standard fire trunk in it?
Mergens vehicles do have the ability to turn around, handas maintain it with their plowing...
No, no, but for example, it's, you know, it's like a...
It's not completely round.
You're looking, you're looking for the typical round, right-of-way, dedicated area.
Exactly, exactly, because I was there, and I was trying to look at it, and I'm trying to figure out, you know, count the cul-de-sac, we kind of moved a little bit to give you guys a little bit more acreage.
I think what we did when we did the Gilman subdivision across the street, we provided that additional radius on the opposite side, so there is the flexibility if something has to be reconfigured or repaved or reshaped, the ability to come across the street and do it.
So there's probably been a further dedication of more land over there to do it, to expand the right-of-way to do it?
I think when we did the Gilman subdivision, we anticipated.
Okay.
There's a lot of setback in the road all the way around.
So where is the, the new subdivision coming in?
If you, if you look up this way, there's a, is there a, is there a spandex here?
Mm-hmm.
There's gonna be a small cul-de-sac stub coming off in this direction.
All right.
Smaller lots in the front, possibly meeting the one-acre zoning threshold here on the acreage side, as you work toward the back, because there's a large wetland, a larger zone.
But the road be away from the house, won't be, the cars won't be coming out?
Right, right, yeah, we have an existing house here right now, vacant lot, existing house, and the homes will be facing each other in, and the road will be in this direction.
And so, when, are you looking, do you have, somebody who's actually looking to build this lot, that's gonna build that footprint of a house so that we know in fact...
See that drip guy at Farm Row?
Well, I have a board in front of me right now.
Put your glasses on. Johnny gets here.
So do you have a potential buyer for this house that's really gonna put that size of a footprint on that house?
Yes, we do.
Okay. That's, I mean, that's important, because you've heard too many appeals this evening that dealt with corner lots, and they just, you know, have undersized lots, or, or, you know, because they, some of these properties were subdivided before zoning went into effect, and, you know...
Yeah, because it just becomes a concern. I think a lot of these people buying these corner lots don't realize that they can't do anything with them. And a lot of these other subdivisions, like Twin Oaks, they put the houses so far back, they don't have a backyard, they want pools and stuff, I mean, it's just, it's been a problem. But any event, so much for the soapbox.
So what's the, are you looking for us to schedule a public hearing? What are you looking for us to do?
We'd like to get a public hearing, but I do think that, look, I'd like to get a public hearing, we scheduled a public hearing, but if your decision is going to be ultimately we're bound by the precedent, what our prior boards did, then, then you'll make that decision, and you won't need to have a public hearing.
Well, I think we still have a public hearing.
Yeah, but the thinking also is influenced by the public hearing also.
We have to look at the merits of the application that's before us, all right? So I think we're all committed to looking at the merits of the application.
Let's just schedule it and have it, and see where we go.
Okay.
Again, my issue was, the cul-de-sac, can it be adjusted? I mean, because if you have some, a little bit of room on the other side, can't something be moved out because...
I can't change this, I can't change.
It's a town round, a town round. And you're only, he's only building one lot, he's not gonna have a whole lot of money to make here on this, that he's...
She just had to put that one on.
Two roadworks.
A lot of that setback in the road is amazing to me.
Mr. Singer, was there correspondence, Mr. Wood and Mr. Bryant back...
Yeah, there was, and I, but I think the final, the final resolution of that exchange, I think, was Mr. Wood and myself on the phone, and it was the obvious thing, as soon as he said it to me, he said, did you ever realize what you're trying to take here, where this, you know, plot was part of the town road? And I said, uh, no, sorry, I wasted your time.
So that's the...
I think that's the way that ended.
Ended.
You know, on the phone.
The fact is, if it's the right-of-way, whether you made the application or not, you can't take it.
And that's the issue with the right-of-way for either side of the property?
All sides.
All sides.
All sides, yeah.
So even along I-84?
Yeah, I always just assumed that...
Well, you know, that's a possibility.
Because only the first...
Yeah, exactly.
Didn't want my letter showing up in more than commission file.
I think we could put it...
Do I have a motion to advertise?
Yeah.
Somewhat.
Second, second, hold on, favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you next month. See Pam for your instructions for noticing, please, because we will require signs on the property. All right?
Thank you for your time.
See you next month.
Okay.
All right, item number eleven, appeal three-six-nine-six, Feely, Edward Feely, thirty-four Frost Road, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a variance to allow an existing twelve-foot by eight-foot shed and a proposed twenty-foot by twenty-four-foot carport in front of his existing house pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh-seven B of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, when last we met and reviewed Mr. Feely's application, we all expressed some concerns about wanting, you know, wanting to, again, let's put it on the table, we don't want to set a precedent by allowing carports in the front of people's homes. We did agree that I would go out and do a site visit, meet Mr. Feely on the property, take a look at the area. To his credit, there are a couple things in his application that supports his request here. First and foremost is, he is definitely not on a main road. I almost got lost getting in there to him, and if I didn't have GPS, I don't know that I would have found my way out, okay? He does not, so he's not on a main road where everybody's gonna go by it and see that and say, oh my God, what is that, you know?
Quite often, people don't even know that road exists, because of the way it goes up and around.
And I don't doubt that, honestly, just because of the narrowness of some of the roads in Hillside Lake, that you just, you know, you're afraid to go down some of them because, you know, if somebody's coming the other direction, it's just not enough room, you feel like. You did, your property, your house is set, it's quite a ways back from the road, there is, you know, there's quite a bit of screening, although it wasn't evergreens, it was, those, the leaves are gonna fall off of those trees, you know, along the end of the cul-de-sac there. But it is at the end of a cul-de-sac. He also does not have a garage at all on his property. And so, you know, I always take that into consideration, because, you know, if somebody has an existing garage, the need for additional parking really isn't as necessary. However, that being said, there, you know, I did take some pictures, because I wanted to be able to share with the board, I forget how to do this, Jen is not here tonight, so... First and foremost, to the extent that you can, okay, this is, I'm in the cul, cutting, starting at the foot of his driveway, working my way in, and so you see there's a significant grade difference on the property, okay? This is his driveway, his house is back here. So it's definitely, he's got some issues in terms of the ability to be able to use his property. So this is the cul-de-sac, this is what I'm seeing parked across the street on the cul-de-sac. You barely see his house, no question. You go in a little bit, oh, no, never mind, that's his neighbor, there was a pool next neighbor. He's excavated out the, pretty much a large area in the front of his pool, in the front of his, sorry, I put the pool out of my head. He's excavated out a large area in the front of his home, and I, and he and I had a discussion there about the fact that this is the front of his home, that there was at least two to probably three and a half feet of slope that was not even protected. But you weren't done, you weren't done digging out the, the area there where you want to be able to park cars. But we, there's gotta be some kind of protection, you've gotta build in some kind of wall, something, and we definitely didn't need to exceed four feet, but there's gotta be something that finishes off. It didn't need against the front of your house, you didn't need a, you know, anything four feet. However, we gotta talk about this other side. When we go to, one of, the other request is, he is looking for a shed in the front of his house. This is the shed. Again, it's, the street's out here, this is behind all the trees, so nobody really sees this until they pull into the driveway. But there's at least, that was at least four feet up, right, to the shed?
Mm, yeah.
Yeah, that was at least four feet up, there was probably only about twelve inches to fifteen inches of area in front of that shed for you to actually climb, and you could do it, I don't doubt it, you know, but where you, where he would climb up the side here and then be able to get in and out of the shed, but it, the shed doesn't have a, it really doesn't have a finished look to it, okay? It doesn't have a door to it.
Right, I took, because I did move it back a bit, so I just took the doors off so they wouldn't be teetering.
Oh, okay, all right, because I didn't see even, see the doors there, okay? And so, my concern about the shed is, I, if I was a neighbor, I wouldn't want to be seeing that in, in the front yard. But if you look at the, while you're looking at this picture, this is his, the left side of his house here. It's a slope with, with vegetation, and then behind it is a fairly cleared area, I mean, and you can see, this is all rock. He is excavating out, you know, rock very clearly. But again, there's no stabilization of this slope, there's no real access to that shed, you know, frankly? If you want to put a lawnmower or something, it's not even wide enough to get your lawnmower in there. So I, I do have a concern about that. This is, Mr. Feely said this, this was the front of his house, really the right side of his house is the front. There's no garage here, okay? So to his credit, he really has no garage. We did measure this, we had, Mr. Feely had a tape measure, and I think it was eighteen feet?
It was, yeah, just about eighteen feet.
From really where the edge of the deck ends to the edge of the paved area, or gravel, whatever it was that we had at that point.
Yeah.
To, but the edge of the road, of the existing roadway that he uses as to park his truck was about eighteen feet. So his, you're built, you can't put two vehicles side by side in that area. And there's a little strip of vegetation that's probably about two, maybe two feet, maybe thirty inches wide there, and then the slope of the property goes down significantly, and that's where his septic fields are. So I do agree that his ability to go to the right of his house is very limited, okay? Now, the shed could go in the back there, as opposed to being where it is.
Okay, moving the shed all the way to the back is gonna be difficult, and that shed was there when I did buy the house.
It was where it is now? I thought you said it was back.
Well, it was, it was up there, I moved, I moved it back towards, away from where it was cleared out, I moved that back a little bit. Like, well, to me, moving it back is, I guess, towards, towards the road a little bit, because I didn't want it so close.
Okay.
But that was, that, like I said, that, that was there when I did buy the house.
That's my...
So, those are, those are my concerns based on what I, what I saw when we...
You're saying that if you go between the house and the shed, there's a clearing there?
There's vegetation, but there's really vegetation, and you really can't get well without going through vegetation from the shed to the side of the house. But there is a cleared area on the left side of the house, but it's uphill, and it's not gonna be convenient for him to get to a shed that's up there.
Well, I'm even thinking that the garage, I mean, he's excavated...
Was this entire area cleared?
This is the shed, so... That's the front of his house. So where's the cleared area based on this drawing, I guess is my question.
This is the cleared area.
Where, where he wants that carport is totally clear.
Was this area in between?
No, and when I'm saying clear, I don't, I shouldn't say clear, ED, the clear area, if you went through here, over here is the...
Yeah, there's a clear area there.
Because...
But it's up a hill, it's at least six, seven feet up.
Six or seven more feet?
Yes.
Okay.
From, again, you see what he...
Because it looked like such a gradual slope.
There's a cleared area back here, but you see what you have to get through to get there?
Yeah, but if that wasn't excavated already, you'd have such a gradual slope for a driveway to get around the back of the house.
To the side of the house.
Yeah, well, yeah. That's, I mean, whether that, you know, deciding factor, whatever, but, see, he's been moving the shed around, moving it closer to the front of the property, he's decided already what he wants to do, he's done a lot of work, I mean, like you say, if that's shale and stuff, it's probably not easy to excavate. He's created a situation and wants us to approve it.
Yeah, but he, his acreage, according to the record, is zero point eight-eight-five.
So...
So it's, I mean, he doesn't have really that much...
It's almost an acre, I mean, but my point is, he's, again, decided this is where the carport's gonna go, he's excavated it all, it doesn't look to me like it was a steep grade. You could have had a gradual driveway going back, you could put the felt back, have a gradual driveway and going...
Go up to the left.
To go up further away, I don't know, I wasn't there, but... I don't know, I wasn't there, but...
Well, I was parking vehicles over on that left and I took it down a little bit because it, you know.
I understand. You done, if it's shale like it looks in the picture, that was not, was probably.
Right, well, this, that, that I did, you know, after I was, took down a little bit and then I got to the shell because I wanted to see what was back there and to level it off a little bit more. And then I got some item four and I put it down because it was, you know, muddy.
I mean, as I said to you out there, I have absolutely no problem with that being a parking area.
Mm-hmm.
My, my biggest issue is why does, why the need for the structure? We did talk it through.
Right, um, well, you know, since, since the-
And first off, you did actually, you did actually show me these, these were plans from a professional, professional book. And so even though it sounded a little bit haphazard to us in terms of what this was gonna look like, it, it is, and, these are professional plans that he was working on.
I understand.
So, I mean, I should give one to Pam for the record there.
This is also a letter from?
Oh, one of your neighbors, okay.
It's not proposal.
So Mr. and Mrs. Brown who live at 28 Frost Road.
As you're coming up, they're on the right-hand side.
They do not have any opposition of Mr. Feely placing a two-vehicle carport on the street side of his home. They've discussed the area with, where he proposes to place the two-vehicle carport. Alright, so we'll make it, Pam, I'm gonna give this to you, but if you could remind us for the public hearing that we actually have that letter.
Can the, should we move to a different location? Because I think you have, has been pointed out, you have almost an acre.
I, I would have to clear some vegetation to actually move it and it's, it's, you know, pretty heavy. You know, so like, by moving it where?
But it's not really functional where it is, that's what worries me, is it's-
Well, from, from the, from the side where it's, the back of the house.
You're putting it up there because you're used to it, but-
Right, in the, the back of the house, because, you know, you can go around, you know, the house and around the deck there. And it, it does go up and, you know, can access it easier.
So if you clear that area?
Like, yeah, a little, little area, it's not much, it's just bramble and, you know, little bit of low, you know, growth over there.
Unfortunately, to turn it so it's more functional for that side of the house, it's gonna be just as difficult as moving it, so.
Well, depending upon how far you want me to move it. If you want me to move it to the other side of the house, that's gonna be, you know.
Right. I, I understand the limitations. I, I'm just, I, I think the condition of it worried me more than its functionality. I, I, I found it would be limited functionality because of, there's, but until you finish that front, you, you could very well create another three feet in the front there, I don't know that, okay? Uh, and so that's why I think what I, is I pointed out while I was there, I was concerned about how do you get up there, you know, how do you get in there?
Block all the light for that thing to-
So I, I, I personally would need to understand, how are you gonna finish the slope on both sides? In the front of your house, because the last thing you want is, you know, having a mudslide come down.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
So we need-
Gonna, gonna put up a small retaining wall. You know, for, for, against that, against that, against the, the house side.
Right, the house side, it's gonna be definitely less than four feet, I have no question about that. The other side, that's likely to be four feet and maybe even a little higher.
Right, well, there's, there's shale back in there. I mean, like, I, I don't see, have the photographs, you know, there is shale by, by the, the shed side.
Right.
And there is, it's, it's earth and all that and I'll level it off, you know, so it will be, I believe, you know.
How is it gonna be stable is what I'm concerned about. Are you gonna finish it or you're just gonna leave it as just here as it is?
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be finished where it's gonna definitely be stable. If I have to put up like railroad ties or some sort of wall, you know, I, I will do that.
I don't know, I'm just-
Again, is your anticipation you're gonna have a floating concrete pad? If this is on rock, what, what are you, making a foundation, what are you placing?
For the carport, I was thinking of getting poured concrete, but I'm, I'm not sure at this point. It all depends upon funds and I'm not gonna obviously pour any concrete without, you know, you gotta get the approval.
Creating a foundation for your posting beam.
Well, the, the posting beam is gonna be, uh, footings. The, the beams are gonna be on footings.
And that's my question, you, you're, you're on top of rock there. Have you had an engineer look to see whether you could put footings in this location?
Are you gonna be able to go lower to get them in the ground?
I'm, I'm gonna, I get, I'm gonna try. I mean, like, I know that when I put the pool in, the footings, when they went down into, like, there was some rock.
Yeah.
Some solid rock, that, you know, that was okay to go down to the rock and on the rock.
Yeah, but how deep is the rock gonna be?
If you're on solid rock, rocks above the ground you can build on. But that's my question, shale, I don't know qualifies as, as solid rock. That's why I'm asking if you have an engineer to say whether you could actually build on this.
Okay, um, well, to find out if the footings, because I, the building inspector told me that I actually didn't need footings for a carport, so.
That's what I'm saying, if you have a floating slab, you could probably just put it on a floating slab. You gotta have something to hold down your post, though. You can't just leave posts on top of ground. What I'm seeing is, is there's a step-by-step thing, you got an idea of what you want. I'm not sure how we're getting there, you've taken some steps, which may have actually made it more complicated for us. Moving your shed closer to the road was not good enough.
Yeah, I moved it like four feet.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah.
You, you're the only person that lives there now?
Yeah.
But you do-
Well, I, my, my stepdaughter stays.
My stepdaughter does business every, every once in a while. So, so realistically, the need for a double carport, you know, because you said you were gonna continue to park your truck where it is, on the, on the side, right? You weren't gonna put your car, your truck in the carport?
Well, no, yeah, the, I, I have three vehicles right now. When I, my, my two stepdottors come over, that's two more vehicles, friends come over. You know, so there, there is a need for parking.
Certainly got the need for the parking area. I wasn't concerned about that. It was just, again, why, why do we need to put a structure in front of your house?
Okay, well, I recently purchased a new vehicle, I have three vehicles. I, I like to, you know, keep them nice and, and I've invested in this area. And the investments that I have, I'd like to protect them. And so that's why I painted the deck, I put on a new roof, uh, two years ago. And it's to protect my investments and the investments that I've made in, in the, in the neighborhood, in this area, so I'd, I'd like to protect that.
But you're asking us to put two structures, I mean, to give you approval to put two structures in front of your house.
Right.
And that, you know, again, you know, I mean, that just, and again, you need to sort of try to minimize your variance that you're requesting.
Okay, well, if, if it makes any difference, I'll, you know, the, the existing shed, you know.
Protecting your investment, I'm not sure putting a carports up in front of your windows on your house is the best way. I would have liked that.
Well, the, the, the carport's only gonna be 12 foot in height. And that's a two-story building, so it's-
I was actually just wondering how tall is it?
Yeah, so it's only gonna be 12 foot in height at, at, at the peak, so, at the, at the ridge, you know.
So right now, it's probably about four or five feet to really the, where the grass meets your home. So it's gonna be blocking first floor, eight feet of your home.
Right, and it's two, two-story structure plus, plus the, the roof, the pitch in the roof. So, you know, you're talking-
I mean, I think if, you can understand something, if we're, the, the board is being asked to grant the property the ability to put a carport. It's not being asked to let Mr. Feely put a, a carport there.
Right.
And so we have to worry about not just you as the user, but down the road, who's gonna be living there and what is, what's that carport gonna look like? Alright, and so the, the-
Guaranteed, this will become a garage at some point.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, what's the finish on the carport?
It's the following week.
Metal, it's wood.
Probably won't get approvals, it'll be there and I'll just close it in.
Two, one, eleven, on, on the sides.
Is it possible to make this car port an extension of the house?
Not really.
No.
I, I agree with him on that.
You run the architecture of the house. The house is a four-square house, it's a nice house. But I would have liked to.
Because there's no door to that house.
Put it back here somewhat more and I think if that gradual slope was left there, it would be fine.
I think you have to come up with some additional solutions for us.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Not just my opinion.
Additional solutions to reduce your variance. Because you're asking for two different, um, structures in front of your house and, you know, trying to-
Again, to his credit, he has no garage. He's at the end of a cul-de-sac, at the end of one of the streets in, in Hillside Lake. So it's not like people will see this and so we can be very clear that this is a very unique situation. But the bottom line is, he still has other, other areas of his yard to work with. Limited on the cleared area because of the septic, no question. So, I don't know.
Is it possible to move the shed to the back? I mean, and then just refocus on the carport?
And, to move the shed, really any distance is, is gonna be difficult to move it to the back.
Let me see that. I'm trying to figure out, based on this, what, the picture that you showed.
Which picture?
Can it just be dismantled or somehow?
The shed on the front picture.
The shed on the house?
Could be demolished. I mean, it's, 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 it's a functionable shed, you know, it's-
Yeah, it goes up that way.
Do you have that angle where you see the name of the house?
See that, that's what I'm worried about, this-
That's what I'm saying, though, this was a gradual slope, so you came up and you went up there, it would be such a gradual-
And so here, you're, you're definitely, you'd be under four feet. It's more than two, it's more than three. This, this, I mean, you see the height of the car, okay? So it's, so in this corner, you're way above, you're at least five feet.
Yeah, but you see what I'm saying? This was probably such a gradual slope that you could've put it back there without probably too much problem. Maybe with a little fill, it made it flat, but I don't know.
But where, where I'm proposing to place it right now-
And on that back side, you actually have a fireplace and stuff too, right? Is that what you have?
I'm, I'm sorry, on the-
You have a fireplace on the left side of your house?
Inside the house.
There's some stuffs out there.
Right, that, that's for a wood burning stove downstairs. There's two wood burning stoves in, in the house.
One here, one there.
Well, both of those, probably that window.
So, yeah, you'd be knocking windows.
And the-
I don't know, aesthetically, it's not appealing to me, I, I think other things could've been done.
How far from the house?
How far from the house? It's not far, it was just a couple feet. How much, how much land still exists from where you cleared your house?
Six, six, six foot of land there.
Six feet, okay. Yeah, it's, it's, it's not much, but, but part of it, there's a jut out, probably for the chimney for one of the other burning stoves. That, that takes up a bad area there, so.
You know, and where I'm proposing to, to place it, it, it's off the driveway. If I were to try to put it anywhere else, then I'd have to put in a whole, now, the driveway. And one of the issues was taking down trees. And if I'm, was gonna be going up around the back, then I would have to be taking down trees and, and, and growth and, you know, and it's just gonna open up, seeing it all the way back there.
This is his driveway, goes up and down, and that's where his structure is. Yes.
Going up there without any problem.
And so there's the shed, right back there. Sorry, can you see it?
I don't know. I mean, the fact that it's so isolated means me one way, the fact that you've created problems, you've already made decisions and now you want us to, rather than say, can I do this because this is what I want? And we look at other solutions that maybe could've been done before you invested in all this excavation and everything and item four to put down. Would be something else. That's what, I guess, is bothering me right now. Because maybe there were other solutions that could've been done if you didn't already excavate for that parking area. One way we gotta make a decision, another, so just agonizing over right now is not gonna help, so we can-
So do we wanna, we need-
Make a motion to have it, I don't know.
You wanna, okay, you want us to go to a public hearing on this? You want us to pursue this further?
Yes.
I, I mean, be warned, you don't have a whole lot of support here necessarily. There are some serious concerns, but, you know, and we understand, I agree. You don't have a garage, you know, so that means a lot to me. And you're at the end of the street, so that means a lot to me too. But I just have to worry about what a carport in the front of a yard is gonna look like.
And the sheds.
And the sheds.
Right.
The shed on, you know, the shed, at least that, that open side is not facing the street. He's gonna look that.
That, yeah, that's why, uh, he used to walk, but they, uh...
So, alright, I'm motion, okay, a public hearing? Second?
Not second, four. Oh, you did a second motion, advertise?
You did the motion, I said second.
Oh, favor. Alright, so take, Pam will give you your instructions for your sign and we'll do a public hearing this month and see what we, see where we go from there. Alright, item number 12 appealed 3698. I don't wanna say this wrong, Scortino?
Shortino.
Shortino, okay. I'm gonna write that down so I, because you're gonna be around for a little bit. Michael Shortino, 10 Orbit Lane, Hobel Junction, is requesting a variance to allow a proposed 12-foot by 16-foot shed to be located in front of his house pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Okay, so based on what you've heard this evening, can you explain what your application is and why it's important that you have the shed in the front of your house?
The back of my house is just a steep slope and I have two side yards. And this would be on the left side of the house, on the lower part. Like, my house goes up a, a hill, so this would be on a lower section of my property.
It's not even near your house, though, the shed.
Well, behind the shed is septic and then it's just all steep hill. It's, it's all steep hill.
Oh, okay, alright. So, I can't, that's so weird. Why can't it be a little bit closer to the house, though?
Uh, because you have a picture of Phil.
No, no, that's the back of the house, I get that. But where the, it looks like, honestly, it looks like it's all set in the yard. The septic fields are?
Yes, yes.
Even on the back side of the driveway?
Uh, back side.
Like, where you, where the curve is in your driveway?
That's, that's going like, you're going straight up the hill. It's a very steep driveway going up.
What's the use of the shed gonna be?
Uh, lawn, lawn tools and stuff, mowers.
It's just so removed from your house.
And it's out in the middle, it's not wooded?
Isn't the location closer to the existing driveway where you can put the shed? Because I do see, there's a big hill behind your house, but I don't see any picture of, of the driveway coming to your-
You pull in the driveway, you're going straight up.
Okay, I'd like to see some pictures of that because, I mean, yeah, I can understand you can't put it in behind your house because it's a, you know, really steep slope.
I mean, are you proposing any landscaping around it to hide it a little bit?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're, you're not showing us, you're showing us a, a house in the middle of nothing. So, is this the, you're just the apron of a driveway and you don't actually have a paved driveway?
Uh, that is a cutoff for a parking spot in the driveway, that's a cutoff. As you come up the driveway, that's a cutoff.
Oh, so you have like a, pull off on your, okay, you're not showing that on your-
I didn't know what, I never did.
Drawing. You're not showing that that's there.
Where is it on the draw, on your, your survey drawing? Where is it?
Aerial, is that what we're talking about? So it comes in this way? Sorry, don't worry, you can see a little car there. So this is how it goes.
When you come in here-
Ooh, little, little car.
Right here, when you're going just straight up, straight up the hill.
Is this your house or your neighbor's house?
No, that's my neighbor's house.
So your neighbor's gonna see this in the middle of your yard. But this is his driveway, right?
His driveway goes all the way up the hill too.
Right, but he's gonna see this in the middle of your yard.
Yeah, he doesn't mind, I respect him.
Yeah, but again, I think it's, you-
You gotta tuck it into the trees, you gotta bring it back.
Septic fields all back here.
Against the hill?
Yeah, that's what septic field has.
But again, I see up here from the, the thing, that there is enough room up here, that's close to your house. There's no reason to go so far into your neighbors. Because I see a room up here, from what I can see.
When you pull in here, there's a cutoff for parking space, right here. That's where I wanna put the shed, face in the spot. And as you go up here, it's just a drop-off off the driveway. Like, if you, if, if your car came off the driveway, you'd like roll the car over. It's a steep hill.
So, is, along the driveway, it actually drops down? Is that what you said?
Off the side of the driveway.
Both sides?
As you come in, it's flat and then you just start going-
Both sides of the driveway are flat, up, down?
So then where's the septic then?
The septic is over here, right over-
Where's over here?
Over here.
It's on the back side of your driveway or is it on the, on the front side of here?
I'm trying to see. Okay, this is, this should be the house. This is the, okay, the septic, the septic is over here.
I think that may have stayed on the driveway.
So on this drawing, you're telling me the septic is back here?
The septic, the septic is right over here. There's a-
That's your fields?
On the type of the driveway, there's the, the tank and it comes down, the fields are over here.
You actually drive over your tank?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're not supposed to do that.
That's like, uh, right in front of the garage.
You drive over your tank every day?
Yeah, that's a big metal plate.
Okay. Lots of county, that's not allowed to put a, uh...
That's what the builder did for you, huh?
You can't do that, you can't do that.
I know, but, you know.
Maybe it's protected by a big metal plate. Do you ever had it pumped?
Okay, so why can't the shed go right here?
Do they come in with a machine that lift that plate?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, how big is the plate?
It's a steel plate that covers the-
Just round, like a manhole?
Square.
Like, but like a manhole cover size?
Like, you see in construction?
Like, four foot by six foot?
Road construction?
Okay.
You see in road construction, that type of plate that you see in road construction?
It's not as thick as that.
Okay, but it's durable.
Cover the whole part of the tank.
So if your fields are going this way, why can't the shed go right there? Right behind this, right behind wherever the field's at?
There's a big steep, all this is a big steep, it goes straight up.
You're gonna have to take more pictures for us, I think.
Can you not cut into that hill a little bit? Because then you're hiding it better. You're still, you know, we're still gonna have to give a variance, but.
There's a wall, there's a, there's a small wall there, and then it's just all mountain, all that, the trees.
And what about up at the top of the driveway, up, like, on the side?
And what he's probably dealing with, the picture that we see in his backyard.
It's a huge drop-off, you have the driveway built to pull in to the garage, and then it's just a huge drop-off.
Right here, like, right.
Right.
Well, it can't be a drop-off there, right next to your house.
This, this is the back of the house, yeah, there's a, there's a retaining wall right here, and there's a two, you know, there's a garage and the driveway.
No, your garage is in the side of the house, right?
Right, right over here.
Because it's in the house.
Yeah, in the house.
So what you're saying, right here, this is obviously going up, you're saying right here is a drop-off?
No.
So that's what, that's what the question is.
Right, all this over, all this over here is just a drop-off.
By the house.
And then it levels out right here with the shed.
Okay, but again, which is a very simple question that the member's trying to ask. What about right there? What is it right there that prevents you from putting it there?
There's a retaining wall and two big, steep hill.
And so the.
But the retaining wall looks like it's back.
Yeah, yeah.
The edge of the driveway is a retaining wall.
Yeah.
You need a picture of that, that's what we're saying.
Do we need a site visit or a picture? I don't think.
Where is this?
We don't like to see sheds in the middle of yards, to the extent that we can help it, really.
Especially way out like that.
Yeah.
Especially in front of the house also.
And when we talk about screening, we want to see, you know, four foot, five foot bushes that can really hide this, or make it blend in better with the environment. This is really proposed to be out in the middle of.
I'm not familiar with Orbit Lane, where's that?
It's going here, where?
Okay.
And why this size? Why can't it go smaller? Smaller would be easier to hide.
I'm sorry.
I didn't know where to hide it.
Well, again, that's not answering the question, the question was why this size?
Yeah, why this size? All right, um, can you get us some more pictures, or? I think we need to see this again before we can schedule for public hearing, all right?
Again, I think all the hardship that you've discussed up here, you need to bring pictures to show that you have a real hardship.
What size is the shed? I didn't see that.
Welcome by sixteen.
Is it okay if I can hide?
Just drive by when you see it.
Can I do a drive by?
Sure, sure.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Shortino, we will see you again next month, and you'll bring more pictures.
Okay, fine, no problem.
And then really, take a look at your property and just explore, is there any other place that we, you could put it a little bit further back?
Okay.
All right?
Okay, very good.
It really would be helpful for us. Thank you. All right, appeal 3699 Low, Larry Low, 128 Blue Hill Road, Hobell Junction, requesting an interpretation of section 194-90, accessory professional offices. Hmm.
Been there, done that.
Had quite the discussion about that this evening already. Can you explain to us, what are you looking to do?
Well, basically, I'm a mechanic by trade.
Okay.
I've done the business down in Westchester for well over 20 years.
Okay.
Now I reside on Blue Hill. I also work with the school district, bus driver, did mechanical work to replace their mechanic that was out ill for a year.
Okay.
But I drive bus at this particular time.
Okay.
Also, I buy and sell automobiles. I basically operate as a broker, customers come to me, you know, looking for a vehicle, I simply go find the vehicle, you know, check the car out, then deliver it, you know, to my customer. The building that I would like to erect is at the back of my property, and I would simply like to have it to put my plow and equipment, and a place to put, I have an exotic car, I'd like to put that inside, so that instead of my equipment sitting outside, it would be stored inside the building, whenever it's not being used.
All right, pardon my confusion, but I don't see any mention of a building. You're asking us for an interpretation of.
If to store your equipment on your property, if you need a garage or something, it's not running a business.
That's not running a business.
Are you asking if you're, are you planning on doing mechanical work and stuff out of the property? That would be running a business.
Well, whatever you say, do mechanical work, meaning.
Would you have customers come in there and they either.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Well, are you, he says, are you conducting New York State inspections at your residence?
No, no.
No, okay, so where are you doing that?
I take my, I utilize Mavis online for my inspections.
If you purchase a vehicle for a client, and it needed repair work, would you be doing it, propose to be doing it there, in that location?
No, I, I take it to Mavis to have the inspection done, and then again, if it needs any major repair, I take it over to Breaker Hall and have it done there.
So, what we're asking you is, what aspect of a business are you gonna be running there? Anything?
Okay, I'm a New York State registered dealer.
Okay.
Okay, to be able to buy and sell automobiles, you have to be registered by New York State, okay?
Same question we had with the broker, I guess.
Right.
So you need the address for this business.
Right, we, at this particular time, I am registered with New York State, you know, from my address at 128 Blue Hill, okay? There is a requirement by New York State that you have to have a sign, okay? And one of my neighbors complained about the sign, so, sign's been up for well over 10 years, so to make him happy, I took it down.
Yeah, I think I noticed that sign, I drive up and down Blue Hill all the time.
And is it a New York State registered dealer's sign?
Yeah. I used to rent the location at 1856 Route 52, which is across from the spa, by Wikipedia.
Oh, yeah, 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 by the old jeans bank shop, store there, yeah, okay.
Right, I used to rent that, but, you know, it didn't prove to be, financially, it wasn't worthwhile.
You need enough business to be able to keep doing it.
There were vehicles left there.
I'm sorry.
Were you planning on keeping vehicles at your residence? There were vehicles there when you had that.
No.
So you go to, you go to auction.
Go to auction.
Purchase a vehicle for somebody, and where does that vehicle go until the person buys it?
Well, it's, it's, it's the situation is to where a customer will contact me, as I say, I own the business in Westchester well over 20 years, people know me.
Yeah.
So they will call me, Larry, I have 20,000 or 30,000, you know, I'm looking for, you know, nice Escalade or whatever, Mercedes, so I go to the auction. I'm sorry.
68 Camaro.
You can get that too. So I go and find the vehicle, and the customer simply gives me an authorization to bid up to whatever point.
Right.
And I just bid on the car, purchase it, take it to have it inspected, and I physically deliver the car to my customer.
Okay, but in the. Never goes to your house?
I'm sorry.
Car never goes to your house?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Okay, that's what we're, so there is overnight, it's parked in your driveway for an overnight potentially, because you gotta get in it, you're getting it from inspection probably on, even on a weekend, you gotta get it inspected when Mavis opens.
Correct.
And then the customer's gotta get to you.
How many cars at a time could be at your house?
I, I do this one at a time.
Until over the course of a month, over the course of a year, how many cars are we talking about?
How many cars? I mean, it varies, I think last year, I sold about, so that's about 100 vehicles.
About 100?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
It's two a week.
I'm sorry.
That's two each, two each week?
Average.
Yeah, ton of average, yeah.
And there's only one part of the time on your property?
Yes, sir.
So each car gets a three-day period?
Well, I mean, it varies, sometimes I might have, I might purchase, like, this week I didn't have any sales, last week I had two.
But would you, let's ask the question a different way, suppose two people call you up, so.
You go to the same auction?
Yeah, you go to the same auction, you buy both of them.
Right.
Lucky, you bring them both home, right?
Okay, I purchased two cars, okay, I'm only one individual, so I pick up the car one at a time, finish that, that transaction, go back to the auction, pick up that car, have it inspected, deliver it to my customer.
That's the answer we're looking for.
That's the answer. No employees?
No, I've been there, done that, working comp's too expensive.
So you're actually looking for an interpretation?
That this classifies as a professional office.
Is a profession that's allowed, or are you looking for us to actually grant you the permit to do your business?
Well, I'm actually looking for the, for the permit to do the actual business as, as what I just stated, and also to have the approval to erect the building in the rear of my property.
Okay.
That's completely separate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless you're using it for your business, if you're gonna say you're gonna put that up to keep a place to store the car, in case you have it for two or three days, that would be part of your business.
Right.
If your business is, I already own my 68 Camaro, and I just want a place to store it, that's personal, that's nothing to do with your business.
Okay.
So if you, as long as you're meeting the setback requirements and that kind of stuff, you go to the building department, ask them for a permit to put up a garage.
And I have those already.
Do you, you have the permit already?
I have the permit, yeah.
Oh, so then.
Again, I'm confused.
So that's not our issue, then?
Yeah, because this application does not.
Mention the garage.
Does not mention about any permits or garage or anything like that.
I don't think he has to, that's why it's probably.
No, but again, I'm just trying to understand, what is he asking?
He wants to run his car brokerage business out of his house, and he wants.
Correct.
To do that. So at first, it's interpretation, is it a professional office?
He, in his statement here, he says, I will also be able to use this building to make those necessary repairs. You just told us you don't do repairs at this property, but your statement says that you wanna be able to use this building to make repairs.
Okay, as I stated earlier, these cars have to be inspected. If a vehicle needs a set of brakes, I am a mechanic, so why would I pay for someone else to do it? So, this is, these are things that I do at the present, you know, in my driveway. I would love to be able to do it inside this building.
Okay, that's.
I got confused.
And you're operating a business and.
I got confused, I thought you were going to Mavis or the other place, at Mavis, to do these kind of things.
Right, that's what you said.
I do take it to Mavis to have the inspection, and I'm not, I'm a certified New York State inspector, but I don't have the license to do state inspection, so that's where I have to use the outside source.
But you did tell us that if it needed work, then you took it to Brinkerhoff. Yes.
Any, any major repairs?
Yeah, you did say major, but.
Right, I said major repairs.
But I think the board wanted more than the answer to a major repair.
Do you do oil changes?
No, 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 these are all things that, the.
But if you get a car, you bid on the car, you're driving it home, and it has no brakes, you're gonna do the brake job at your house.
Correct, right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oil changes, inspections, things of that sort, it's done elsewhere.
That's not a professional use.
Yes.
That's a car, that's a car repair.
That's the, that's the interpretation he's looking for, I think.
All right, so now I think we have better direction for us to be able to set up a public hearing and have that discussion, get public comment on whether others agree with my personal opinion, or, you know, and then we can get some feedback from people. So that's the interpretation you're looking for.
Right.
That's actually operating a business with a potential physical repair aspect on the property.
Correct.
Limited repairs.
Correct.
But how do, how do we enforce a limited repair? What's gonna stop you from changing a transmission out, you know? I know, but again, if we approve it, as I said to the other gentleman, we don't approve it for Larry Low, we approve it for your property.
Right.
And so if you have this approval on there, what's to stop the next person who owns this house from saying, oh, I can do auto repairs here? Okay, and then suddenly, we are changing transmissions and engines, and, you know, it becomes a much major, much more major use. That's what we've gotta worry about, okay? That's what this board has to balance out to protect your neighbors.
The question is, again, do we go with the idea this is just an interpretation, or does he make the application, and we deny it because it's not allowed? Is there a difference in cost between the two things, I guess is my question?
No, do we?
Well, again, I think that, because I looked at the law here, it says very clearly that, you know, that, you know.
It is more money?
A special permit may be given to members.
So we just took the interpretation?
Yeah, to members of a recognized professional trade are permitted in residential district. So that's, again, what does that mean? If that's interpretation you're looking for, that's one issue.
But it's for a professional office.
Exactly, and that, and again, repair is.
That's a huge difference.
Exactly.
Not a garage.
You're sort of getting the impression that, yeah, your garage, a place to do.
What section was that, are you reading from?
194-90.
You might be getting your answer right.
All right, so.
Yeah, it'd be one thing, I, yeah, in my mind, so you decide what you wanna go forward, in my mind, if you're telling me you're a broker and you're running it just as an office, you know, I would listen to that argument. You tell me you're gonna run a repair shop, no matter how limited, that's not an office.
No, 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 no.
No matter how limited your repair shop is, if you, if you want a building to do repairs in as part of a business, that's not a professional office. So, I don't know, you can go forward and get a formal decision, but it seems like you got three members here who are saying.
Ever consider renting a bay someplace?
Um, well, I thought about that, but there again.
From Danny and Jay at Brinkerhoff?
The, the expense, you know, of that.
Well, you can pass the expense on to the client.
Well, maybe, maybe not.
I mean, if you're running a business, you can say, it costs me, you know, X amount of money for having the brakes fixed.
Right.
Those are the issues, I mean, because, you know, you can do it at a rental place, or you can do it at your property, and if you do it at your property, we're assuming it's gonna be personal stuff that you're doing, but if you go to 100-some cars, 50 cars, whatever number is that's.
During the course of a year.
Correct, and that creates, because it's not only you, but your neighbors are gonna be seeing that, that business being run.
They don't know if it's minor or major.
All right, so do you wish to continue with the interpretation?
Well, whenever we say the word interpretation, and as I stated earlier, from my home, I've already been approved by New York State.
Doesn't mean anything to us.
Right, you know, that I understand, so that's where, you know, I need the interpretation of being able to, you know, continue operating, you know, as a, as a broker.
It, it sounds like what you really need is you wanna get a permit to operate your business there from the town.
Correct.
So it doesn't, it doesn't sound to me like you need the interpretation. The dilemma is that my understanding of reading the code is what you're proposing to do isn't allowed.
Because the code is very specific, professional office. And this is what I was trying to convey before.
Keeping resentment.
If as a broker, you wanna say you're a professional, running a professional office because you're accepting calls there and maybe meeting occasional clients who come by, and that's it, then you have a good argument that you can run a car brokerage business on a limited basis from your home. As soon as you say, "I'm fixing cars there," no matter to what extent, whether it's just changing brakes or changing the oil or whatever, as soon as you're doing mechanical work, you're not running an office. You're running a repair shop.
Right, that I.
So, and to the extent I think you're getting your interpretation right now, is you have a good argument if it's a car brokerage business. You got a really bad argument as to the point where you're getting an answer that is not gonna fly if you're doing any kind of repairs there.
Okay, well, basically, what I am looking for is to have the approval to continue operating as a auto broker, you know, from 128 Blue Hill Road.
You wanna do that, and you wanna go forward on that?
Yes.
Maybe make the request for that and maybe convince us that's okay with the stipulation that you won't do any repair works there.
Correct.
Nothing there.
I don't, I don't have.
You might get us on that one, you might, yeah, yeah, probably, I would.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. You know, you gotta, you gotta make it clear that you're running a professional type office there that's dissimilar to, you know, with a real estate broker or a.
I have, you know.
Accountant or whatever.
I have a good rapport with Mavis and also with Brinkerhoff.
Well, that's the question, do we just, again, does he really need the interpretation? Or is he just taking his chances with applying for this special permit? Two different applications, I do get that.
What's the difference in fees?
What's the difference in fees?
This was seventy-five and special permits, one twenty-five and three hundred dollars escrow.
Okay, but again, he's gonna need that. If we interpret this in the right way, he's gonna need that anyway. He's gonna have to pay that anyway, so I don't know that.
You're rolling the dice. We haven't considered this before, right? So, you have an argument that running a automobile brokerage is a professional office.
Correct.
And you may convince us of that, you may not. That's gonna cost you the seventy-five dollars. If you win, we say, "Yeah, you can do that," then you have to come back again and get your special use permit, and you have to pay all the fees. So, what the chair is asking you is, do you wanna go through a two-step process? And if you lose, you don't lose as much money. If you win on the interpretation, then you're paying that unnecessarily. Is that right?
Yes, otherwise, we can refund, well, with five dollars, right, on your interpretation application. And then you meet with Pam and file the application for the actual permit. And you take your chance on whether the board would approve a permit for you to operate an office as a broker.
Okay, but then I'll meet with Pam, and that's what I would like to do.
I think my, my take based on our discussion is that's really the more appropriate step for you.
Right.
As long as you're gonna limit your operation to the office, broker, and no repairs.
No problem at all.
Okay, yeah, so I have a motion to refund Pam everything except five dollars and, you know.
Second?
Second.
Fall in favor. All right, okay, so we're gonna refund you, all but five dollars on your first application. You're gonna meet with Pam sometime in the next couple days to get a new application in. So that next month, we're gonna talk to you again about, really, what is this professional office? How is it gonna operate? And then we'll set a public hearing for it.
No repairs.
Yes, no repairs.
Thank you.
And again, if you complete the application, I'd appreciate it.
Remember those two words.
No repairs.
We're gonna hide the tools.
All right.
All right, we understood, no repairs. All right, we'll see, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
But please see Pam and then meet as soon as possible, okay? Thank you. Okay. Okay, item number fourteen. I, I hope you guys, I know you're sitting here for a long time. I hope you understand that.
We're learning a lot.
The public hearings go as smoothly as they do because we take the time now, all right? And so I hope you recognize that that's, we already did this for those public hearings that you saw earlier, okay?
And I'm glad you're learning because there's gonna be a test.
I filed on my application.
'Cause guess what's next, another professional office. Item number fourteen, Appeal thirty-seven hundred Hernandez Zullen. Okay, Edna Hernandez Zullen, 138 Country Club Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a special permit for an in-home professional office hair and nail salon pursuant to Section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. I don't think I've ever seen so many professional offices in one night. So, good evening.
Good evening.
So, you're gonna take us through your application, okay? What are you looking to do?
Exactly what is written on there for you.
Okay, then tell us, how many employees you're gonna have? How many clients are you gonna have at any one given time?
No, it's, for now, it's just gonna be me.
For now, that doesn't, that doesn't cut it?
No, I mean, that it's just me operating.
For all time?
For, yes, yes, under New York State, it's only me to operate the business.
Okay, then I need to understand, why are there three nail salons?
This is, okay.
And a drying station, and a hair cutting station.
I can give you the whole story behind all of that.
And a reception desk. That tells me there's more than one person there.
No, there's only gonna be me. I can give you the story on that. What happened, my business partner and I had opened up a business in Poughkeepsie, Main Street. And I decided to close the business. She and I partnered in closing the business because the crime rate there started to increase. I have two young ones, and my life is very important to my kids. I didn't care about the money loss. I'm still making payments on these furnitures. They're new furnitures, they were not used. And so, you know, I'm like, I have a beautiful basement. Let me go to the town and see if they will allow me to have a business out of my house because I'm still making payments on these furnitures. She and I, we split, there was more than that. We split it. She is doing what, she has her equipment stored away, what have you. And I have my things at my house right now. And I have my passion in doing nails, hair, skin. I have my cosmetology license with all of that because of that I love to do. And I'm good at it, and I just want flexibility, so that's why I'm asking if I can have.
Is it all surplus furniture, surplus furniture?
What do you mean?
We said you brought furniture from the.
It's leftover from your business.
It was at my business.
Right, and you're, but you're not gonna actively use it now.
In other words, you're not gonna be, you're not gonna have yourself at one table, somebody else doing something at another table.
No, not at all, not at all.
You're not gonna have one person doing, you do the right hand and go to the other person.
Not at all, no, not at all, no, no.
I can't support a request that shows a pedicure, three nail stations, a hair station, a washing station. I, I can't support that. You can sell the rest of the equipment on Craigslist, whatever it is. I don't see that we need to set you up with this much equipment because it just begs the opportunity for, again, not you per se, but the next person who owns this home comes in and they bought it now with three stations, you know.
Oh, but those are, but those are removable, I mean.
So remove them, don't put them in there.
Well, I guess the question is, it's in a different way. If it's just gonna be you, do you need that many stations? In other words, do you need to have?
With the pedicure station, the nail station, that there's only two, there's only two of each.
You should only, well, you should only have one of each.
Okay.
You can only use one at a time.
Okay, I can, I can sell.
That's what we're trying to get to.
That's fine, I can sell one manicure, one pedicure, if that's what you're asking. I can definitely do that. And with the washing station, there's only one washing station.
There's one washing, I see that, right?
Yes, there's only one washing station, there's one hair drying station.
Right.
There's one nail drying station.
Right, but then you have.
So the only thing that I will have to then sell is a nail station and a pedicure station.
Two pedicure chairs.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so when you get doubles of things, no, I, I just, I can't support that.
Okay, I can, I can do my best to get that sold on Craigslist, but.
Maybe have a mom and a daughter come in, or you have two best friends that are coming in.
That's the only re, that's the only, that's the, well, I, I'm making payments on the furniture, and I just didn't want it to see it go two ways. And she is not doing anything on her own anytime soon. So I'm like, well, you know what, being that I'm making payments on this as well, well, let me take it so it doesn't go to waste, and let me see if the town will allow me to run my own home business. Because they, there could be that a mom will probably bring her daughter, and there'll be something that I will want to educate young girls in taking care of themselves, or even young boys taking care of themselves, you know.
But the next thing, then, you're gonna have a birthday party, and you're gonna have, you know, somebody's coming in with three of her friends, and it, having the equipment there provides the opportunity for you to not have to say no. And, and so.
Are you saying, are you saying that with operating, like, say, if a mom came in to get a facial done and her daughter wanted to get a manicure and a pedicure, and say the mom wanted to have a pedicure? Maybe, like, the mom came, like, say the mom wants to have a pedicure, and she wants her daughter to have a pedicure with her, that's not allowed?
Well, you can, but if it's just one person, you're gonna be doing one at a time.
Right.
That, that's, that's only one person, that's me. I mean, it's my, it's my house, that's.
But again, we're not trying to say that you're not being honest.
Okay.
Problem is, when you have all this equipment there, and then you have a friend who, well, "I really need to make some extra money," it's really too easy for you to say, "Well, I got all this, come on over." So, rather than create the incentive or the.
I understand.
Don't want any extra equipment there.
Okay.
Because, and also, again, not doubting your credibility, it just gives the impression that somebody's actually looking to do something big, so.
I see, okay.
Limit what you have to just what you need.
Okay, I will sell, so basically, it's just to sell the one pedicure station and the one manicure station, you'll be okay?
I'm not gonna give you the answer.
Oh, I don't know that we're okay.
We've got somebody, yeah.
Oh, okay.
You, you heard what, do you have deed restrictions, by the way? I, this, this development has deed restrictions, right? Don't you have deed restrictions filed on your property? Are you restricted from operating a business in your home?
That's, I don't, I don't know about that. I don't know.
You might, you might.
I don't know, I'm some.
This is the Legends.
The Legends, yeah, Legends definitely has deed restrictions.
Yeah, definitely has restrictions. We've seen sections of those restrictive covenants.
You might need to.
That I'm not allowed to have a home business?
When, when did you purchase?
Like, you're not allowed a shed, you're not allowed an above-ground.
I have a shed.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't know, I'm just giving you examples of restrictions.
My neighbor has an above-ground pool.
I, I don't, I don't know.
Oh.
We know there are deed restrictions filed in this development.
When did you purchase?
But, well, the way how my house is situated, it's, I have a very, very long driveway, and my neighbors.
You need to go look at your title report and see if it mentions that you have deed restrictions on your property.
Okay.
Like, like the flower, were you here for the flower, was it one, the real?
Yes.
He obviously didn't know that there are deed restrictions. When that development was built, there were deed restrictions filed on the property that restricts the use of the property. So you might need to check that out for, only because we're aware that the Legends had deed restrictions filed.
Oh, okay.
We've got many issues with Legends, and so, yeah, I am pretty sure that there are deed restrictions.
Okay, okay, I'll look into that.
When did you buy the property?
I'm sorry?
What year?
What year did I buy, two thousand and five?
And you had an attorney that represented you?
I wasn't, I wasn't with my husband when all of that.
That we had an attorney represent you in connection with the real estate transaction when you bought the house.
Did you have an attorney that assisted you with the purchase?
At the closing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, you should contact that attorney and go over the contents of the title report, title policy.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we, we're gonna need to see you again before we go to public hearing because you need to shrink your, your, what, your proposal.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Show us one station of each, all right? I don't mind the multiple types of stations because you do that type of work, and that's fine.
Yeah.
But I have to, I, I can't see you starting right from the start with two chairs, and two chairs, and two chairs, you know.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay.
Just.
Show access from outside where they're going, people are going to park, how they're going to get into the, it looks like they're coming into the backyard, is there clear access?
Oh, there is clear, yes, there is.
Some of this could be troubled by restrictive covenants.
Are you gonna have a sign?
And that's separate. If, if you're restrictive covenants, again, say that you can't have a business there. It doesn't make any difference what we say.
I understand.
If your neighbors find out about it, they're gonna shut you down.
Yeah, they will find out, I don't know.
Yeah, you're gonna have a fine or whatever, yeah.
Correct. And do you plan to also have a sign outside?
If I plan to put a sign.
Do you also plan to put a sign outside on the front of the house?
No.
Okay, good. That was the big issue on the other.
No, no, it's just word of mouth advertising.
And any hours of operation you might be considering.
Well, my neighbors, my neighbors, they work during the day. So, the operation was gonna be early in the morning till late afternoon.
Right, but if you do it Saturdays and Sundays and.
Oh, well, I don't work on Sundays.
But Saturdays, when neighbors are home and in their yards and.
Yeah, but, I mean, I only look to.
We have to, we're gonna, if we go forward with this, we're gonna have to have public comment. Your neighbors are gonna have the opportunity to come and comment on traffic, all right? You need to be prepared for that.
Okay.
Right, but yeah, the first thing is, you really, really have to go look at your restrictive covenants.
I will.
You need restrictions and see if there's anything that prohibits business.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
We will see you again next month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Fine. And here's my agenda. Oh, here's, sorry. Too many papers here. All right, item number fifteen, Appeal three-seven-zero-one, Bermudez. Martha Bermudez, 24 Canterbury Court, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a ten-foot sideline variance for an existing in-ground pool and a fifteen-foot sideline variance for an existing pool patio pursuant to Section 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. All right, we need to start this discussion with the fact that you, your neighbor has filed a complaint, okay? That you, apparently, you put in a pool, and I understand the town gave you a certificate of completion. But your application said that your pool was gonna go in twenty-six feet from the property line.
Okay.
And according to the survey, your pool is fifteen feet from the property line. So it appears that you did not put the pool in in the location that you told the town.
Okay.
Okay, you do have the dilemma though, or we have the dilemma in the fact that the town did give you a certificate of completion a couple years ago. Now, though, apparently, there's been a patio that's, has been perhaps expanded or something. There, there's some dilemma about a patio that clearly is on your neighbor's property.
The patio's not on their neighbor, it's not on my neighbor's property. The patio's on my property.
Okay, well, part of the patio is the stone that you have surrounding your patio and are surrounding the fence. There's some red stone.
Encroaches.
Red stone and brick.
That's what the neighbor is complaining about.
Oh, that's what, okay, I mean, that's just decorative, we put it around the fence, I mean, that's nothing.
It's on his property, you don't have a right to put it on his property.
No, 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 I understand that. I'm saying, so, let me just back up for a second. We didn't intentionally put the, you know, the people that built the pool came in and did all the permits for us. I was unaware that it wasn't where it was, and when they came to do the CFO, everything was fine. So I never knew until he filed the complaint that we were past our property line. For all the, all the years the pool has been there.
So nobody ever drew a line, the builder never drew a line?
Wait, hold on, the pool is one issue. When did the patio go in?
The patio was there from the beginning. All we did is actually, it was cement before, and we now added stone. But the red, you mean the red decorative, sorry, wrong thing. That's not a patio, it's just a couple of stone.
No, the patio too, and the fence.
If it bothers, I mean, the crumple stone, we can remove that, we just did it to make it look pretty because there was a lot of, it's hard to weed whack against the black fence because the, the wire gets caught in the fence. So rather than have the weeds come up around the fence, we put that little red stone there with the cover.
The red stone is definitely on your neighbor's property, and you can't do that.
Well, the red stone is not, according to the map, is not, according to where he put the line, the red stone is not. It's close to it, but it's not on his property.
The line goes right over it.
No, there's a, there's a corner of one brick, about a half an inch.
I would say more than a foot, based on what he has here. I don't know if it's correct or not, but.
Well, did you have a survey?
The other question, though, is.
But I can take that out, I mean, that's.
That's not the sole issue.
Right.
You keep interrupting. It's not the sole issue. Your patio is supposed to be at least fifteen feet away. Your pool is supposed to be at least twenty feet, five feet away from the property line.
Correct.
Those are issues. And the way he described it happening is, yes, you had a pool put in with a concrete deck around it. Then you had that deck, concrete deck covered with brick, and you extended the brick out, or block, whatever you wanna call it, out even further from your pool, which now, based on his measurements, are probably about nine inches from the property line, not fifteen feet. So, those are the issues that we're presented with.
Sorry, I'm confused, I'm sorry.
The neighbor who filed the complaint actually has given us a statement that says, "When you originally put in the pool, you had a three-foot wide patio, concrete patio around your pool."
Three-foot wide, well.
On that, on this side of the property at least.
On the side of the property, it's the sta, well, it was twelve, I don't know the measurements, actually. It was fifteen on the front end of the pool where we have a gazebo. And the rest of it was about four to six feet of concrete, and the rest was grass. But the fence goes all around it. So what we did was, I didn't like the way the concrete looked, so we just put the patio stones over the concrete existing where it all was, with the exception of the grassy area that goes up against the fence, and just covered that to make it even.
So you did expand the patio?
Yes, that patio, but you're talking about the red stone, I'm.
No, I.
So you've now made the patio closer to your neighbor's house when it wasn't there before?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's a part of it, yes. Okay, you have a couple other issues that we have to deal with.
Okay.
Number one, you have a permit from two thousand and one for your bonus room? So you have an outstanding permit that's not resolved? And a bath over the garage?
Bonus room and bath.
Oh, a bonus room and bath over your garage that's expired. So, we can't even go forward on your application until you've renewed this and get this into compliance.
Okay, so that's, is that all the same issue?
Well, we have to deal with any violations on your property.
Got it, okay.
When you come in, we have to deal with this. Now, the other dilemma you have is that we have one of your neighbors sitting here who last year did the process the right way because he came in and requested a permit for a pool, variance for a pool, to be able to put a larger pool on his property, and he wanted to have it closer to his neighbor's property. And we denied his variance, okay, because of multiple issues, but. So our ability now to look at across the street and say, "Why shouldn't we make you move your pool?" is the dilemma we're faced with right now. Your pool isn't, you know, I mean, your pool, again, there is a difference, there's a significant difference in that the town approved a certificate of completion for yours, all right? So, but the patio is not, and so, is the patio is stone or it's just concrete?
It's pavers.
Okay, so it can come up?
Yes.
It can come up?
Yeah, pavers can come up.
I mean, yes, I guess it could come up.
All right, so I think that's what we all have to consider, the fact that it can come up.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm, you know, I mean, I understand what the chair is saying, but I have a problem. I don't... The fact that the town goes out and gives us a certificate of completion just means that the pool was completed according to code, you know, in terms of electrical and stuff. I don't think it means they're approving where the pool was put.
Well, that, so that's, that's part of our dilemma, isn't it? Part of our consideration is she still needs the variance for the pool.
So what liability your contractor has for putting it in the wrong place may be a big issue. We can't encourage, again, we have a neighbor sitting here, so why doesn't he just go put a pool instead of contractor put it in the wrong place?
And I'll don't deal...
And we're stuck with it.
And I'll go to the board afterwards.
Yeah.
I, you know, we gotta give him credit.
No, no, I'm, I'm not, I mean, I understand what's happened across the street. I talked to Sean and he explained the process. Again, I'm being a hundred percent frank, when we put the pool in, we didn't know we were past the property line, to be, to be honest.
But it's your obligation to know where the property line is.
Right, I understand that. I mean, I've sat here for a couple hours and I hear how this is going. This is my first time in front of the board. I didn't know what the process was. We went all with good intent to put in a pool in, got our permits, did all the things that we had to do.
We recognized that, yes.
You know, so that, that is all. And there are all the things, I never questioned it, and I'll tell you why, is when we moved in, my neighbor put, asked me if he could put some pine trees on the property line in order to create coverage. And those are at the front of the house. So it's between the, with the driveway, it's his driveway and my side windows of the house. And he had always said to me, or the assumption had been for the last fifteen years that I've lived there, that the property line was from that line tree all the way down. So for the last fifteen years, I've been mowing that grass, I've been taking care of everything from the trees this way. So when I looked at the property, it didn't look like it was off. I mean, I didn't go out with a tape measure. I didn't know the code, the variances. My assumption was that my property line was from the tree line that he planted all the way down. In fact, a couple of years ago, he wanted to put an electric dog fence, and he came and marked on my line, which is apparently his line, and said, do you mind if I dig here on your side so that my dogs can have a bigger yard? And I said, well, actually, I really, you would rather you didn't dig on my yard if to put the dog fence, could you just not put it right on the property line or inside your line? And that's what he did. So all along, we've been operating under the assumption that the line was where the trees was all the way down. I didn't realize that he verded in, and that's how we've been living for fifteen years. I've manicured it, kept it. When he put his dog kennel up when we first moved in, it was on that same line in the back. But now the property is all the way this way, and again, it was a misunderstanding all along for fifteen years that I've lived there. I've assumed my property ended where that tree line is. And that's honestly what's happened. So when he put the pool in, I'm standing in my pool, it looks like it's fine enough. They've done the permits, they've come and given me the COO. I don't think I've done anything wrong. I think I've complied until this complaint comes into play, so, you know, yes. Now the stones, I mean, you know, I didn't realize that was additional, because again, I never knew it was in error from day one. So it's not like I'm doing all these things to try and get around the system. I did it with all intent of being proper and all the right steps in the town when I did everything that I've done in the house so far. So, I mean, you know, I mean, I, I hear you, what you're saying. I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just gonna explain to you what has been the case. I mean, I've been taking care of my backyard for fifteen years, mowing it, grooming it, weed whacking it. I've gone all the way to a tree line from the day I moved in.
Okay, so based on the discussion here tonight, do you have any suggestions on how to fix the problem?
I mean...
Before we go in forward with that, I'm looking at a survey which clearly shows there's almost twenty-six feet of area from the pool to the neighbor. So again, again, the thing is, yeah, but again, we do not know if the neighbor...
That was, that was, that was part of the pool application.
I understand, I understand.
That's what I'm saying, so I don't even, right.
But again, the neighbor is not certifying that this is, the string that he is putting between two locations, he is not certifying...
He had a survey done, and that's the survey state.
But the problem is, if you look at their proposal, the pool clearly goes behind the jog in the house. And the survey clearly shows that your property line is not straight.
Right, now, yes, yes, it does.
But then you just argued a couple minutes ago that you didn't realize that the line moved.
No, no, when the survey was done now, I mean, when he did it, when...
No, the survey that's attached to your application for the pool clearly shows that your property lines on the side are not straight lines.
I mean, again... Again, the...
You have a survey from when you bought the house, apparently, or when you wanted to do a change on the house. It shows that that's not a straight line.
Yeah, but I'm not, no, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, but I'm not...
But it also shows that it's gonna go behind the jog in your house. The corner of your house, which I guess is your garage, that's where your pool's gonna go. And that's not where your pool is.
Behind the jock of, I'm sorry.
Come, you, come up and see.
There's a jog in your house. What's that, the garage?
No, uh...
And then it goes back further.
Yeah, it's the top of your driveway.
That's where your pool is supposed to go.
My driveway's over here, yes, yes.
Yeah, but this is...
So that's your garage, correct?
My garage.
That's what, yeah, that's what the town...
And that's where your, and that's where your pool was supposed to go, at that corner of the house.
My pool is, the power is, was here. The pool is there. I mean, again, I can't...
No, it's not there. It's not behind the corner of the house.
Let me explain to you, because that's the problem that I was having was, this is your application, which shows very clearly where the pool is.
For your pool, yes.
Okay, this is where you put the pool. That's a problem.
Not even close.
Because it's still a map of survey. This is what you, when you came with the permit.
Right, well, yeah, the pool installer did. I didn't really, yeah.
So you have some liability with the pool installer that he didn't follow the permit?
Right.
If you're, I mean, this is what I thought you were putting in.
No, no, right, so what I'm saying is, again, I'm not looking, I mean, I don't know what this means or not, but this is the first time, you know. To me, if I'm looking at...
All you're doing is telling me...
The trees are right here. The trees on my property line are right here. So when I went like this, I mean, if it goes in, and if the vanage...
An eighth of an inch on a piece of paper.
I don't know, but let me, this is what, whoever did it moved this particular pool up here and to this location.
So why isn't the pool there? Why isn't the pool behind that location?
Yeah, it's supposed to be right behind the pair.
We should've told the builder, this is where we're putting it.
You should go back to your pool company.
Okay, but I got this, and this is all I got.
No, this is what was submitted.
What do you mean, you got? You got? It was your obligation to come in and get a permit and to understand where your pool was going. And apparently, somebody understood that it had to be away from the property line, and to be away from the property line, your pool had to be here, not there. Somebody understood that. Who drew that thing there?
Um, probably the pool guy.
Probably? You need to find out who did it and why it's not there. Somebody measured that out. Somebody knew that it was a hundred and fifty feet from that point to that point. Somebody knew it was twenty-six feet from there. Why isn't it twenty-six feet?
I don't know. I mean, honestly, I don't know. I, they did this, they came, they, you know, looked, they inspected it. They said it was fine.
They inspect it to make sure the electrical's okay, the plumbing's okay. They're not certifying that you put it in the right location.
You know, check the property lines.
I don't know that, so, I mean, I'm not trying to be, that's what I'm saying.
But it's your obligation to know that.
Yeah, but again, Mike, you're concerned...
It's like saying you don't know you're supposed to stop at a stop sign when you come to this country to drive. You gotta know that you stop at a stop sign. You gotta know you stop at a red light if you're gonna drive on the roads.
Okay, so you, you have, you've now come to us for variances, and we're pushing back on the request for variances. And Ashley asking, I guess we're gonna put the question back to you, why should we grant the variances? You, you know, what are your other options here?
Take out my pool?
Well, that's an option. You can move your pool. You have, you, it appears you have a liability issue with your pool company. I don't know, you know?
How can I move, I mean, honestly, I mean, I'm asking, like, how can I honestly move the pool? That's a huge cost that...
How can you encroach on your neighbor's property?
I didn't know I was encroaching on his property. I mean, it's not like I did it intentionally to go in and put my property. I thought it was the right distance. For the years at pool, he never said anything until recently when he had the survey redone. And again, as I mentioned to you before, we're both understanding that the pool, the property line was further out, so I never, it just never, you know...
So what are you, I mean, what are you suggesting? You could take up the patio at a minimal? I mean, you have, you do have options here.
I mean, can I ask, what is, I, we still don't know, what is he asking of us?
He wants the pool to be proper, to be compliant, thank you.
Where it was supposed to be.
So that requires us to move the pool?
Potentially. Or at least take up the patio. I mean, understanding that associated with the pool is a lot of noise. And that noise carries over onto the patio. And so the closer a patio is to a neighbor's property, you're now bringing barbecues, kids playing around, you know, people sitting at a table and talking. You're bringing it to the, you've brought it to your, practically to your neighbor's property line, as opposed to being the fifteen feet away that it's supposed to be. All right? So that's one of the things I'm asking, can you take up your patio? Can we reduce the variance that you need? I mean, your other option, frankly, is go have a discussion with the neighbor and do a lot line realignment. Give him some of your property and get, and take, and get some of, get the property that you need. You're gonna have a funky-looking angle around your pool, but it's possible.
You can give him his back, portion of the backyard, you can give it to him, and he can give you a portion...
Of the side there.
Of the side, so you'll have like a box.
That's an option.
You can balance it out.
Yeah, balance it out.
And then you don't need a variance. But I don't know what's in, in his backyard. I don't know that you can do that. It would require you voting to the planning board to do that?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, to take the pool out is, it's astronomical.
Huge issue, I don't doubt it.
But my recommendation would be to go talk to your neighbor, because he has done his homework. We talked to a professional, talk to your pool person who did it, and say, this is a problem, let's find a solution.
Mr. Oswald's been involved here.
Okay, so you have a professional involved?
Who's, I'm sorry?
The surveyor.
Mr. Oswald.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Who's familiar with...
So again, talk to the professionals. They deal with this issue regularly, and they may have some certain solutions. So between you and your neighbor and the professionals involved, come up with a solution that we can all live with.
So the options are, talk to him about...
No, we're not giving you the options. We're just suggesting...
No, I understand, so I just wanna...
But we can, we can guide her with that. You can have a conversation with your neighbor about a lot line realignment.
A lot line realignment, okay.
That's where you, you have 1.00 acres, so at the end of the day, you still should have one point, you have to have 1.00 acres. That's the minimum zoning. Your neighbor probably has 1.00. So if you need to swap out, I don't, I don't, I'm just saying, four hundred and fifty square feet to get the right mountain, you need to give your neighbor four hundred and fifty square feet, probably from the back of your property, and he'll potentially, if he agrees, would give you the four hundred and fifty square feet around your pool. I don't know what the dimensions is that you need. I just pulled the number out of the air.
Right.
That would require approval by the, by the planning board.
Okay.
He probably would want you to pay for that also. He would probably want you to pay for that also.
Which, pay for what?
It's gonna need a survey, it's gonna, there's an application to the planning board.
The applications and fees required to do that, you're saying? Yeah, okay.
Right, I suspect that would be part of the discussion.
And it might be cheaper solution than having a pool moved.
I would, yeah. Okay, and then you mentioned something else. Talk to the, as another alternative? I mean, I only see one alternative, to be honest with you.
Well, you gotta talk to your pool company, or you might need a lawyer to talk to the pool company.
Yeah, because the pool company, you know, again, if this is the application they gave, they should have stuck...
Why didn't they comply with it?
Yeah, why didn't they comply with this application, which is what they submitted? So it was your understanding, town's understanding, everybody's understanding was this was the application.
Right.
And what they resulted, what resulted was... I mean, we not, I'm not worried about the patio. I'm worried about the pool. The pool location was clearly identified, and somehow the pool moved like twenty feet.
But the patio is oversized.
Of course, I mean...
Was expanded on, and I think the expansion of the patio is what really red flagged it for the neighbor. Who, you know, who just seemed to think he were encroaching even closer to his property. That's all.
But we would use all that space before. It was just grass.
I can't speak to his frame of mind. I don't know.
Can I just ask if the space was used exactly the same way before? I'm asking, because I don't know. It was just a grassy area. We put the lawn chairs there, and now we extended the stone, still...
Again, the...
The way I read his complaint is, is that when you put in the pool, he was concerned that you were too close, but he was gonna be a good neighbor and not worry about it. And then you made it bigger, and then you made it bigger. So at this point, finally, he says, this is way too close, and he tried to determine how close you were. He had a survey done. He was actually surprised to find that some of your improvements were on his property. So he's filed a formal complaint. That's why we're here.
And you're...
And again, if the pool was put where it was located on your application, you would never have had a problem.
Correct. And what, again, one of the things that you can do is come tomorrow to our, our office and get a copy of the complaint. So this way you'll understand exactly what the, your neighbor is complaining about, so at least you're prepared.
You can have mine. All right, just so that you have the information.
Can I just add a picture on there?
It's a picture, it's all part of the package.
So this, this is considered, this is the patio that you were talking about, not this?
Well, it's all, all...
I mean, I see a paver around the stone.
And, and again, I, what I was saying before, we just put that to try and keep, because it's hard to move. I can, I can take that out.
Again, talk to your neighbor about it. It's gonna take more than...
No, no, I understand, but that's what I was trying to understand, because...
So, yeah, again, just read it.
The fence has not moved since we put the pool in, and this, this, all this stuff has not moved since we put the pool in. You know what I mean, so that's...
Well, if it was a three-foot concrete sidewalk, and then you covered it over and made it larger, it has changed since you put the pool in.
Yes, on this corner, yes.
Yes, okay, so...
It's a part of the pool, okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
We'll see you again next month.
Sorry, next month. Come back and do what exactly?
Tell us what you're proposing to do.
Because you've talked to the professionals, you've talked to the neighbor, you've talked to the pool person, you have talked to the surveyor, you have, you know, maybe an attorney.
And tell us what your options, tell us what you're proposing to do.
And they will give you some options and proposals, and then you can come back.
Okay. We, we understand. This is, you know, you probably got blindsided by this, but, but bottom line, we have to deal with it, and we have to protect your property neighbor. Okay? All right. Item number sixteen, Appeal 3702 Buffner. Mary Buffner, 170 Pexslid Road Homes, is requesting to build on an undersized lot, .68 of an acre in a three-acre zone, which was subdivided prior to zoning on a non-town road, Windy Hill, pursuant to section 194-130 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. John.
Mary.
Mary.
So you have an undersized lot. However, to your advantage, this was an approved subdivision...
It's pre-existing, non-conforming.
Pre-existing, non-conforming. So this is a very different situation than the non-conforming lot that we saw earlier. Okay? So you're now proposing to build on it?
And it's on a town road of Windy Hill. That, it's dated non-town. It's a town road of Windy Hill.
Windy Hill is a town road?
Yeah.
Windy Hill is a town road. We believe.
Oh, no, it is.
Do they snow plowed?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
Yes, it is.
No, it's a town road.
It's a town road.
Yeah.
Well, I'm starting to believe you.
But there were some non-town roads that somehow, over the years, the town has eclipsed, took, taken, maintained.
It's a town road. We have, we have another, we had another piece next to this piece, another lot.
Yeah, might be maintained.
And was developed ten years ago, and it was a town road. Yes, it's a town road.
Well, we'll verify.
We'll verify.
Okay, okay.
The town should be able to tell us whether they...
I don't know if we have copies of this map, but this is the engineering that's been on, done on the property. We were, we...
I guess what we're gonna be concerned about is, what, what we're gonna be concerned about is, if you're putting a house on, the footprints of the house, are they gonna come back and ask for variance for a pool or for a deck?
No, it's gonna be to all the offsets.
You know, I mean, do you have a built, you have a large enough buildable area on this lot?
Yes.
That the family that lives there can truly enjoy their lot?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, because we did develop lot two about ten years ago, about six years ago.
Okay.
We received the variance then.
To build.
And part of the variance to build there, well, we had to put the septic fill pad in on both lots.
Okay.
I believe that's section, note number twelve on the special comments of this drawing.
Okay.
So you already have the septic?
The, uh, fill pad's in for both lots. We developed lot two. Now my daughter went back to Chicago.
She missed you.
With a grandson.
So now we gotta do it again. That's what we'd like to do.
We'd like to.
Okay. Comments or questions?
Do they have that map?
Yeah, they have. Yeah, this seems straightforward.
I'm, I'm okay with this one.
Motion to advertise?
So moved.
So moved second.
We'll see you next month. Pam will give you instructions to your sign.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Yeah, it's too late.
Because we, we have to have a public comment. Your neighbors have the op, have to have the opportunity to tell us whether...
Sure.
Can I approach?
Yeah. We don't bite. It's just been a long night. Yes.
This will be, this is a lot of...
Okay.
There's a neighboring property on here. There's a existing house here.
Okay.
Can we put a, not town, but this composition, can we put a property sequence here?
Four feet, four feet up the rear line of the house. Beyond the rear line of the house, it can be six feet.
It can be six feet, but it's got the four feet from this point down.
Four feet from this point forward.
Like towards the road?
Yes, toward the, toward the road has to be the four feet. Yes, toward the road has to be the four feet.
Six feet behind the house.
Six feet, behind the house can be six feet.
Okay, so I can't bring a fence down to the property line?
You can bring it.
Sure.
Six foot... Boss has to be two feet in.
Two feet off the property line.
Where's the driveway?
Right here.
Okay, yeah, so the front of the house has to be four feet to the rear line.
Okay.
From that point on, it can be six feet.
Oh, got it, okay.
So where you want the six feet is okay.
You would be sightdistant for the road.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, I understand that now.